No.
No.
You can't hear me at all?
Nope. Maybe.
Not.
Try it now.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, John?
Oh, no, I can't. Okay.
Now you can? Okay.
John, we can't hear you.
Yeah, we can hardly hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, it's volume on our side.
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
Mine was down. Mine was down too. That's why I couldn't hear you. User failure.
Okay, thanks.
This is our high-tech way of doing it. Hey, John, say something again.
Say something again.
But is that not?
Create an echo effect if you've got the speakers on here and if you've got the microphone on here and this microphone.
If it happens when you're talking, I'll just turn it down.
Turn your mic off. You don't need your mic on.
Okay, you got it.
Hey, when did you guys decide to go to in-house?
Um, it was on an email that Marta sent.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
The agenda.
I'm in the wrong place.
It's okay, John. We'll forgive you.
Hey, this is the, the era of Zoom. We don't need to be anywhere. We could, I could be in bed right now.
No.
So are all the commissioners there?
Um, we have three and you, so we have a quorum.
Okay.
Hey, John, can you hear us now?
Um, yes.
Oh, you had to change your background, huh? Can you hear Rick?
No, not really.
You should be able to. Will you talk again, John?
Okay.
You talk, Rick.
Can you talk, Rick? We turn the speakers up here.
Yes, I can.
Hey, John?
Yeah?
I have an off-the-record question for you. So, talking to my insurance guy today, what's, what's a square foot with the lumber prices and all that good stuff? What's a square foot cost to build a house?
Boy.
Can you guys hear okay?
I can't really hear you very well.
Oh, here, come over there. Okay. Yeah, wait, wait, why would you need to? Because...
Because it's on this one and this one pops to that one.
Wait, hang on a second.
It won't go from here to there. It has to be on this one.
Um, it will if you're, it's picking up on the mic right here.
But those guys can't hear them.
Right. And so what we'll do is we'll have the sound project down to, um, a, a mic.
See, this always has to be on. I know that for the Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to do it through there so we can do it through the TV.
Okay. Aren't you already on Zoom?
I am on Zoom on, but I need to log in as the host here.
Oh, I see, I see.
Okay, so I need to sign in.
I can hear you guys fine.
Yeah, we're sitting right by the laptop.
So are you going to be able to route the commissioners' mics through this?
We're trying right now. It worked.
Okay. Well, sorry to throw this into the mix.
Oh, no, that's, that's working. You turn this volume up and turn your mic off.
I try not to go past the map.
Can you hear us okay now?
I can hear you, but you are, you have feedback.
Is it better now? No?
You have a second mic near you, Angela.
I can just mute myself. It'd be fine.
Can you turn that system on?
What?
The volume up a little.
Yes.
I think that'll help.
Testing.
This one feeds into here. Okay, then Angela, you need to stay on mute.
John, can you hear us now? John, can you hear us now?
Yeah, now I can, but I can't see anything. Boy, this keeps throwing me off the Zoom.
I think we're just down in the commission chambers and we don't really have a camera, so I don't know that you'd see anything anyway. We can try this, though.
Yeah, I mean, that gives me the screen and I can see the participants at least.
Testing, testing.
I can hear that, but there's feedback, huh? Like a buzzing.
I can hear the buzzing too. Is it like, is it, uh, so bad that we're not going to be able to have the meeting or is it just kind of?
Well, it's not, you know, it's 10 or 20%. It's not 100%. I wonder what that is. Are you, there must be a speaker near a mic or something?
Yeah, that, that's what that is, John. It's the mic here in the commission chambers.
If you mute the mic in the commission chambers, what's it sound like?
So if you mute the mic in the commission chambers, you won't be able to hear any of, any people in the commission chambers, but you certainly won't hear the, uh...
Well, is the mic the commission chambers' mic or is, it's not the commissioners? There you go. Nope, it's back.
Is that better? No mic, no buzz now?
It's back on.
The buzz is?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty weird buzz. So is the microphone in the, at the podium off?
No, it's on. All the mics here are all connected to the same system. Testing, testing. Can you hear me, John?
Yeah, and the buzz, the buzz is very little now. What, what mic are you nearest? The podium?
Yeah, the buzz is still there. It's, uh, every single one of these mics in this one, in this commission chambers is connected to the same system.
You can't just unplug the podium?
Wouldn't it be funny if we had a guy named Mike here that we were talking to? John, on your side, does it overwhelm the conversation?
Not really.
Buzz? No?
Again, it's just, it's there, but it's not overwhelming. It is a little annoying, but it's not bad.
Kind of like Charlie.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, that's a good one. Yeah, I don't know. Somehow we gotta fix that for the future, though, because there's, you wouldn't normally need that. I don't know why it's doing that.
Just FYI, the commissioners are pretty...
What?
Angela, are you doing that?
John?
Yeah.
Um, just FYI, the commissioners are working on getting a new system, um, for this room, so hopefully by the time we meet next, it'll all be resolved, but no guarantees on that.
Yeah. Well, Rick, I'm sorry I didn't pick up on that. We were trying to do this down there. I certainly could have.
No, no worries. Um, we have a quorum, so, um, we have five minutes before the pre-meeting. Just one. Just one thing.
Can you all hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where, do anybody know where that's coming from? Um, Steve, you there?
Underwhelming Charlie's here.
Hey, Charlie, if you turn off all the mics there, does that change anything?
Yeah, so if we turn off all the mics, the mics are actually running through the, um, the Zoom, and so if we turned off all the mics, you wouldn't be able to hear us.
Do that just for a second. Let's see if it changes the feedback.
There's a turn-off switch right up there. Pretty sure that's like how the bishop silences people when they get out of line.
Try that. No, it's off.
John, did the buzz go away?
No, it didn't.
Okay, so we turned, we turned the entire system off.
Okay, so that's not the problem. Some other, uh, audio plug of some sorts? Not the mics then?
Yeah, probably. I'm sure when the, uh, new system gets in, it'll be better.
Okay. So, uh, what commissioners are here? I can see Ron and John maybe?
And Chris.
And Chris.
And Chris.
John too also. The minutes will not be considered on this agenda and item 2.5 will not be considered on.
Okay. Well, this will be good practice for people and commissioners in different places.
Yeah, for sure.
Sorry we have to do it today, but, uh, this would be better for us to get a quorum in the future if we can figure out how to be here and there.
Yeah, one thing we found when we did the kind of mixed quorum with the Board of Adjustment with half here and half not, it didn't work so hot when the board was trying to deliberate and make decisions. It worked okay for public comment, but for the board members, it was a little difficult.
Yeah, that's good to know. Hey, Rick or Charlie, can you take that laptop that's looking at the commissioners and turn it slightly to the right? The other way? Little bit more, right there. That catches all the seats anyway.
You ready to start, John?
Yeah. Ready? You good to go, Rick?
We are.
Okay, hey, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance. Uh, let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go ahead and, uh, do a roll call the best I can. I know for sure we have Commissioners Hoag, Commissioner Lackey, Commissioner Howell, and myself, Commissioner Lewis. Do we have any other commissioners here?
Steve Waldrop is here. Just walked in.
Okay, welcome, Commissioner Waldrop. Uh, not in attendance yet are Commissioner Francis and Commissioner Burton, but we hope to see them. Okay, uh, first of all, uh, has anybody, uh, had any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest with the items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Um, no minutes to approve, I guess, tonight. Uh, and we are, just so anybody knows, we're not going to be covering, uh, item 2.5. We'll be doing that at a later meeting. So why don't we go ahead and get into our first topic, 2.1. It's a public hearing and possible action on applicant-driven request to rezone approximately five acres at 9:47 East Old Snow Basin Road, um, from CBR 1 to FR 3. That's the corner of the highway and Old Snow Basin Road. Looks like, uh, Charlie, you're going to be reviewing for us, so I want you to take it away.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Give me just a moment. Not only were we having, uh, audio difficulties, had a little bit of computer difficulty, but we just had it rescued, so give me just a moment.
Take your time.
Angela, can you make sure sharing the screen is an option? Oh, you're sharing the screen. Almost there, my apologies. That's okay. We'll pause. Thanks. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had to, uh, re-download a Acrobat reader. But just about done. I was gonna say, gone are the days when Gone are the days when analog always, never ceased to fail. If we had the overhead projector here, we'd be just fine right now.
Charlie, you want to just hold up your handout?
Sorry?
Want to just hold up your handout?
I might need to. Actually, I've got it about there. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
What are you seeing?
There you go.
There's the agenda.
Oh, perfect, okay. Alright, sorry about that. Technology is great until you need it. Alright, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the planning commission, thank you. This might get a little choppy as we as we do this, because I had to use a different avenue than the presentation that I'd made, but we'll run really briefly through the staff report on this one. So, this is at the corner of Old Snow Basin Road and Highway 39. Let's get an image of where it is. There we go. So, in looking at the property here, the applicant's property is this one outlined in red on the screen. The other property that would be involved in this rezone is the one marked as CB2 over here. So, this is the current zoning map. Applicant's property is Zone CBR1, and the property across the street is Zone CB2. We have been in discussions with the property owner across the street in the CB2 zone. They're comfortable with the rezone, and we're recommending including that for various reasons, that I'll get into in just a moment, but also just to keep zoning consistent in the area. Right across the street, you can see that there are quite a few condominiums over there. One of the requirements of a PRUD development is that they require 10% commercial space. And if you look kind of right here in this area, or if you drive by, you'll see that that commercial space doesn't exist, or at least it didn't at this time. The market for commercial space at this intersection just isn't great. At the same time, if you were to head just about three quarters of a mile to the east, you've got the intersection of Trapper's Loop and Highway 39, which is suited, far more suitable for a better village, a commercial village or mixed-use village area. Snow Basin has already planned that intersection out. Basically, they kind of know what they want to do there and where they want to put things. A competing village in this area may not support a good market for the intersection over there. As with any corner that's zoned commercial, the first thing that comes to mind would be a gas station, at least for the property owners trying to get the highest and best use. And this is the first property coming into the valley that would be able to hold a gas station. So, you think about the intensive uses that could happen on either of these two properties. I think if I were the property owner, I would try and do a service station if there was a market for it. This property here, this applicant's property, was previously rezoned to CBR1. At the time, entitled to do a hotel. So, a hotel was previously approved on the property, and due to market forces or whatever the concern was at the time, the hotel never happened. The applicant was only able to secure 13 sewer connections to the local sewer area. And so, they won't be able to do any more than 13 units, whether they be single-family dwellings, condos, or what have you. They are proposing single-family dwellings, but they're not asking for a development agreement at this time, nor are we. That'll be up to you guys to kind of consider tonight. Their proposal is a little bit further down the packet, which I'll show you. Without a development agreement, the concept plan is just a concept. It could be something different in the future under the FR3 zone. And so, that's why it's important when you're looking at a rezone like this, this is what it would look like after rezoned, if rezoned. It's important, and when you're looking at a rezone like this, what development standards are, what they could be in the future. So, the FR3 site development standards and the CBR1 site development standards are actually remarkably similar. I think one of the primary differences is in the FR3 zone, you can have, one building can sit on a parcel of 6,000 square feet, as you can see here, for a single-family dwelling. If it's two-family dwelling, it would need to be 7,500, and multifamily dwelling would need to be 7,500 plus 2,000 per dwelling unit over two. And that's how big the site would need to be, or the parcel would need to be. If you look at the CBR1 zone, it just starts with 7,500 square feet. So, if you're going to have one house, the smallest lot size you could have is 7,500 square feet. But that would apply similarly to two-family dwellings, would be 7,500 square feet. Once you went to a three-family dwelling, you'd have to add another 2,000 square feet on top of that. Four, five, six would be 2,000 apiece, in terms of how big the property can be. So, when you're looking at what the full buildouts, like maximizing full buildout of the property is, the FR3 zone makes it very clear that no more that may not have been included in the staff report, but no more than 20 units to the acre is allowed in the FR3 zone. If you run the calculation on the CBR1 zone, based on the site development standards, if one building was constructed, they'd be able to get approximately 21 units to the acre in that one building. Now, it doesn't make sense to have one building, but economies of scale and looking at the highest and best use in terms of residential housing, I think you've got just a little bit more density in the CBR1 zone than you have in the FR3 zone. Something that's worth noting, they've already got the zone there, and so, some of the comments and concerns that I've received over email expressing some challenges here is it's just going to block view, it's going to cause hardship to the surrounding neighborhood, which very well could be impactful. The evaluation here is which is more impactful, the development of a CBR1 zone or a development under the FR3 zone. The FR3 zone doesn't traditionally allow commercial uses. If they did a master plan development overlay zone, they could potentially get some commercial in there. Under the CBR1 zone, it's a mandatory requirement of at least 10% commercial space. So, CBR1, it's currently zoned that mandatory requirement of at least 10% commercial, and then the rest could be dwelling units. So, this is their general layout, at least conceptually. As soon as the surveyor gets in there and really starts looking at where all the property lines should go, it may change a little bit. But it's a small enough site that getting a little hammerhead turnaround here with a small cul-de-sac here tends to lead to the best layout, at least for the applicant's purposes. The average lot size in this development is about 8,000 square feet, so it's pretty small compared to what we usually see in the Ogden Valley. There's a subdivision right next door, which is also a cul-de-sac, and I calculated the average square footage of those lots. I think it was 0.62 acres, which is right about 26,000 square feet. So, these lots are about a third the size of what the lots are next door. The other thing to consider, as I kind of touched on earlier, is what uses are allowed and the differences between the two zones. So, here I've got listed the FR3 uses and the CBR1 uses in your packet. As you can see in the CBR1 zone, quite a few commercial uses. The purpose of the CBR1 zone is to create recreation or resort-oriented zoning primarily oriented for commercial purposes. The purpose behind the FR3 zone is essentially to create residential areas in the proximity of resort or recreation areas. If you were to read, so in your staff report, it specifically says what the purpose is of each. I don't know, just on its face, if the CBR1 or the FR3 zone really would or should be applied to this area. However, if you look at where FR3 has been applied across the valley floor and where CBR1 has been applied across the valley floor, it's not always directly proportionate or related to sorry, now it decides to work, or directly related to an actual commercial endeavor or recreational endeavor on that specific site, or a resort endeavor on that specific site. So, it gives a little bit of wiggle room for your consideration, but again, if a rezone doesn't occur, it's about the same amount of density with a mandatory amount of commercial that would have to go in. So, overall, I think the FR3 zone in intended uses and compared to the CBR1 zone is far less intense on the FR3, because it's residential in nature. When you're looking at when you're looking at the specific area here, let's move down. FR3, Highway 39 creates a really nice edge of residential spaces over here. Having a little bit more density at an intersection makes a lot of sense as well, given its proximity to easy and efficient access to the transportation system. It wouldn't be hard to create this kind of development up on both of these properties, given the CBR1 zone standards that are currently applied to this one, but it would be way more impactful, I think, to the neighboring owners. And a little more challenging, I think, to get this kind of density because of sewer considerations. So, when we're looking at a rezone, the county code requires the planning commission to consider the general plan. Ultimately, the county commission, when they make a final decision on this, they don't have to comply with the general plan. But it's good for them to receive a recommendation from the planning commission with positive findings or negative findings based on what's in the general plan. And so, if you support the proposed rezone, there is support in the general plan for it. And if you don't, and you'd rather see it stay CBR1, there's plenty of support in the general plan for that as well. In the general plan, when you're looking at this particular area, let's see if I can zoom in. Here is East Huntsville, so a village area is planned here. Here is the intersection of Trapper's Loop and Highway 39, a village is planned here. And here is the subject village that we're talking about. So, you've got in really close proximity, three different villages. One of the principles in the general plan that you'll find is that we're going to try very hard not to get strip commercial along major highways. So, concentrating development, commercial development in unique spaces is important. Just from a personal anecdote perspective, when we were working on the general plan, the original map here did not have this village on it. I specifically requested to take it off, because I didn't feel like commercial area right here, more commercial area right here, would be conducive to the residential nature of what you have right across the street over here. Now, it was put back on at the request of a resident almost at the very end of the process, and it didn't receive any opposition, and so we moved with it. But as you look up at some of the other areas where village areas are planned, we already know, as we create the Eden Small Area Plan, we originally wanted to do just Old Town Eden. But due to economies of scale and the fact that this four-way intersection in the new area of Eden, it keeps changing, maybe a little bit more rapidly than what's going on over here. And so, if we don't kind of grab that bull by the horns, we're going to lose an opportunity. So, we're looking kind of at this area as kind of a bigger village. And so, it makes a little bit more sense to think about the connection between these two and plan them together. In the same respect, if we're looking at three that are that close together, I think at some point in time, it's going to be inevitable, or at least very hard, to keep them from merging into just one strip commercial. And so, my evaluation of this is that, number one, the FR3 zone seems to be less intense. It seems to be more compatible with the residential nature of the neighborhood than the CBR1 zone that it's currently zoned. And if we were to call this village area, if you look at the map, the map says the general plan calls this the general plan calls us the commercial locations and village areas. And so, in discussing this with Director Grover and with the applicants, and trying to consider the residential nature of the surrounding area, we thought this might work really well as a residential village and essentially let it build out residential. A little bit more density, as you can see, it already exists across the street. More density on these properties, because it already exists under current zoning, but less intense uses, because it would be changed over to residential.
Charlie, you see that what we quest is the other way around, you know? I mean, I've never seen it like this.
Well, so there is an expense involved in building more sewer. Yeah, no, it absolutely, it absolutely is. It's a little ironic that it's going this direction. Let's see. Okay, so as far as water, wastewater, fire engineering and other utilities, all of those will be required to be addressed specifically when they submit a subdivision plan. The, we know that connection to wastewater is limited to three connections right now. And access to water and getting fire authority approval and engineering approval will, those are all specific points that we really polish when we get through the actual subdivision process, not just the rezone process. But we want to know, when we're looking at this, is it even feasible, or are we wasting our time? And we have found that it is feasible, just a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's with those particular providers. I know I missed something here. Traffic impact. So, when you're looking at that intersection, we know that the use of Highway 39 let's get a little closer in here. We know the use of Highway 39 is not likely to decrease, it's continued to increase. The level of service is going to decrease as the traffic increases. We've already got reports from some of the neighbors that on a really good snow day and morning rush hour to get down to the valley, you can get a line of cars here waiting to get out. So, that could be a little challenging. So, looking at right now, this is either a left-hand or a right-hand turn lane. Looking at possible opportunities for improvements at this intersection, the most that we can ask any developer, whether it be this one or somebody further uphill, to provide here would be an additional right-hand turn lane. And the reason for that is because this is a state route. So, the state, if they felt the need to have this widened for an acceleration lane here perhaps, or at some point, different considerations, like a roundabout or whatever it may be, to help better facilitate this intersection here, that would all be at the state level, not at the county level. And thinking about acts, getting access to, uh, the, the stacking area as they wait at the intersection to get out. Uh, this left-hand turn lane could get a little challenging, but again, there's not a whole lot that can be provided to this road here. Um, perhaps, uh, a center, uh, turn lane, uh, with a, uh, uh, right-hand turn lane. But if the stacking area in that center turn lane comes all the way back here, it's just going to be what it is. Um, and, and people in this development are going to have to wait to get out. Um, and as they wait to get out, people who are further up, um, you know, will have the right-of-way before these guys will. If at the point that they do propose the subdivision to the county with an application, the county engineer will work with the applicant and UDOT to figure out if any additional considerations need to be done, uh, at this intersection. If a turn lane, uh, here is roughly proportionate and essentially related to the impact of this development on that street system, we could ask the developer to provide, uh, a little bit more asphalt and some striping to provide a turn, uh, right-hand turn and a left-hand turn. Um, and that could help people who are running over to Trappers to jump on, um, eighty-four, uh, in, in Morgan County, um, not have to wait in this queue to go down, uh, the canyon. But right now, looking at rezone and without a development agreement, um, that's not a requirement that, um, would be applied. Uh, it'd just be thumbs up or thumbs down on the requested rezone. And then at subdivision, um, the county engineer would catch that. And typically we wouldn't require any kind of additional improvements like that unless we had a traffic impact analysis that suggested that additional lanes are going to be needed because of these thirteen units. Kind of a better understanding of what that area might look, look. Excuse me, how it might look. So eight thousand square foot lots, um, in the context of the shape of that parcel there. And this is another version of the site plan that you've already seen. Our ordinance, uh, to some degree requires that building elevations and stylistic designs be presented at this, uh, point in time. Um, they're not mandatory, uh, the applicant is providing them because, uh, they think that they've got a, uh, quality design for these buildings and, and they would like, uh, consideration for what their intended, um, buildings are going to look like, uh, in this area. So you kind of see a general layout of, of, uh, one of their types of units. Another version. So as you can see from, from what they've proposed, they've got some, some pretty decent designs. Um, I don't think, uh, anybody in the area is going to be super excited about how small the lots are. Um, I, I doubt you'll, you'll hear anyone but the applicant saying that this is a great idea. But, um, given that, uh, there's already the potential for these size of lots to exist in that area plus additional commercial. Um, uh, my recommendation would be for approval. I think you've got sufficient support in the general plan for it. Um, and, uh, I've got findings for that listed in the staff report, sorry, I tried to get to it. Any questions for me? Uh, the applicant is here and, and they're more than happy to address questions or give presentations.
Just one question, hotels aren't allowed in CB one, is that correct?
This is CBR one or CB one?
This is CB one, correct?
It's CBR one.
CBR one.
Um, resort oriented uses are allowed, so nightly accommodations would be allowed.
Right, but a hotel couldn't be built there, right?
Depends on what you define as a hotel. A recreation lodge could be built there, um, which could have a certain amount of rooms in it. Um, I, I'll have to go back through the, uh, actual uses that are listed. Seems like a hotel would be allowed, but if it's not listed on that list.
It was only in a CB two.
Okay, yeah, if it's not on that list, then technically a hotel wouldn't be allowed.
So Charlie, the, both owners of both properties have required, or are in agreement that this is what they want.
Yeah, so the property owner across the street is Snow Basin Resort. Um, and just in general discussions with them about resort development, we asked the question about rezoning this to FR three and they said they'd be more than fine with that. Uh, there hasn't been anything in writing that I'm aware of that suggests they'd be fine with that, but just in general dialogue, they tend to be fine.
The only one property is up before us right now.
We're, we're actually proposing to rezone both of them just to provide consistency and zoning in the area.
That's, is that?
Hey Charlie, um, why don't we go ahead? I'd like to hear from the applicant and then we can come back to commissioner questions for they and you. Um, but in listening to the applicant, could they also cover, I, I'm sure the neighborhood is very interested in, uh, if they're going to be doing short-term rentals or not. Um, the, it looks to me like about eight bedrooms and I'm curious about parking and guest parking. And then, uh, at the end, I'd love to look at the topo, not the topo, but the Google Earth image you put up and the actual setback, you've got backyards that look like they're twenty feet off of a fifty mile an hour roadway. So I'd like them to at least touch on those, but I'd like to hear from the applicant if possible.
Great. That area will up just to have it for one discussion. In the CBR one zone, perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, and thank you for considering our application for the rezone. My name is Todd Myers, I'm an employee with CW Land. We're located at twelve twenty-two West Legacy Crossing Boulevard in Centerville, Utah. Uh, we are the applicant to develop this land to rezone it and also to build the buildings. And so our hope would be to get the rezone approved as, as quick as we can go through the process and just as quick as possible submit the plat and the building plans to go with it. And so it's not something that we're doing on speculation to see what happens, but we, we are the client building the buildings. And so we would control the quality of those buildings. As Charlie mentioned, the, the current zone is a commercial zone. And as you read the comprehensive plan, you'll see the comprehensive plan tells you to cluster your commercial together. And it also, as you're looking at rezones, to be able to consider how things have been built out in that area. And so the general plan clearly shows that this area is a commercial, uh, village. However, when you take into consideration, looking at the, how the area is developed, it's probably not the right area for commercial. Everything is developed out as residential. And that's what our application is to do. And I'm very excited that the staff reached out to the property owner across the way, across the street, because when we get our residential built in, we would prefer that it would be residential across the street from us. And a lot of that deals with, you know, the impact that commercial has on residential. If the traffic is definitely an issue in this area, onto this street, but also the hours, if you look at your uses in the current zone, you can have banks, small grocery stores, sit-down restaurants, fast food restaurants, conditional use permits allow for beer parlors, hotels, liquor stores, uh, boat in Snowville rentals, service, reception centers and service station. A lot of those uses go into the evening, if not twenty-four hours. And so with ours, it's going to be just a single-family home. And so I think it blends in better with the existing residential that is there. Now, it is more dense as you go, as, as in comparison to what is up the street. But that makes sense be, on a planning standpoint, because having commercial at the intersection of a state highway and a street that functions as a collector. This is a good planning principle to have the more dense in this location. The access is nice in that, well, UDOT controls the highway. We're not allowed to have, we've already met with them, that's not an option. The only way this property has access is off of old Snow Basin Road. That access is before you get to the single-family homes that are existing in the area. And so they don't have that impact that you would have as though this was, say, a quarter mile up the street. And so again, it kind of fits in quite nicely with planning. Traffic counts, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I, I've done a lot of retail projects in my life. They have a lot higher traffic count than the thirteen homes. Now, as Charlie mentioned, both the current zone and the proposed zone will allow up to twenty units per acre. However, there is a development agreement on this property for the water and sewer. Those impact fees have already been paid. We are capped off at thirteen units. And so even though the zoning may allow it to go higher, the availability of water and sewer limits what can go on this property. And so this thirteen is not just me up here saying, hey, that's all we're going to do. No, that is the max that we can put on this property. I'm happy to stand for any questions that you would have.
Um, could you go ahead and address the?
The property across the street, your CBR one property, the CB two, we, we don't have any file number for that or anything, do we?
This includes that.
It's collectively or is it?
Both of them together.
So in other words, it's combined with this petition here.
So the applicant, the applicant across the street hasn't applied for a rezone, but they're aware that we're considering their property for a rezone with this one, just so we.
It'll be a separate deal?
No, it'll be with this one. So the recommendation from the planning commission would go to the, uh, county commission, uh, recommending a rezone for both of them.
CB one and the CB two.
That's right. My apologies.
I think what it does is both properties were part of one notice so that the action can be taken on both properties. Any other questions?
Uh, so the, the thirteen sewage connections, is that? Hold me back. All right, so the, um, sewage system that serves this area, is it on both sides of youth highway thirty nine? Or is it just on the south side?
I, I only know about our property.
Oh, okay. I guess that'll be more details to come later, I guess, when they actually do that.
I believe as I was walking up, there was one question on overnight rentals. Our application does not include that, but we also don't want to limit the future property owners from making the applications and following the ordinance as it is at that time. So, um, it could be in the future where they would apply for that, but that would be individual property owners doing so.
Charlie, I have a couple of questions. Charlie, can you hear me?
Uh, I'm, I'm here, yeah. I didn't want to, uh, overwhelm, uh, Todd's time.
No problem, uh, well, and I, I do have the questions for the applicant, I just wanted to have a moment to ask. So assuming that they're not ruling out nightly rentals, then we have to assume the worst case, which is nightly rentals. And again, I see very little parking and eight-room, small houses with eight bedrooms. So could he address parking? And then also could we address the distance between the back of the house and the highway?
So what we would have is there are four parking spots for, for each unit. So there would be the two in the driveway and the two in the garage. And we were happy to put in to our restrictive covenances that their garage has to be available, that they couldn't just fill it up with their own personal things and then do a nightly rental. That if they do a nightly rental, their garage has to be available to have the parking count. The, uh, as far as the setbacks from the highway, you can see we've put in the minimum requirements per the ordinance and the dash line. Matter of fact, Charlie, if you could go to the one that shows the site plan. So that shows you in relationship with the rear yard requirements. And as Charlie mentioned, we have not done our plat at this point. And so as the plat gets prepared, there could be some alterations there. We can see what we can do to increase that one rear yard.
Okay, I mean, I don't, I, I guess I just picture kids playing in a backyard in a highway. Are you thinking fencing? Like, are we going to drive up to this and see fences around the whole thing? Or how do you keep people safe?
It is part of our covenances that they will have to fence their yard. Uh, we, we are leaning towards the Trex material. We do not want a vinyl-type fence, but something that doesn't quite have that polished glaring look, but, uh, fits more in with the, the character of the homes.
I mean, currently there's no fencing in that whole area, so this would be, this would look a little different being fenced off. Okay, well, appreciate the answers. Uh, commissioners, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
How large is this property across the street, CB two?
So the property across the street is a little over an acre. Um, the combination between this property and that property is about five acres.
So it's five acres for the whole?
Total, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the recommendation, I think I said, uh, I recommend moving from CBR one to, uh, FR three. I left out the CB two in that, I apologize, it should be in there.
Charlie, while you're up there, I have a, one other question, just on the, on the Hammerhead, on the, um, further westmost area there, it looks, I, I mean, we're looking at a, are these private roads or the public roads?
Private, they are private and we're working on an ordinance that we'll talk about tonight, about, in regards to private roads.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the Hammerhead goes into the garage.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, and, and would affect the ability to, in the driveway. That's something that'll be addressed in the.
It will have to be, yeah, the, the fire official, the fire official would, um, require that there's sufficient turnaround there. Uh, and if it's going to be occupying parking area, then that would make it really hard for them to get a nightly rental there because they won't have enough parking space.
You know, they would potentially have cars there just on a regular basis, which would be feed the purpose of the Hammerhead.
Right, exactly.
Um, and there's no option for. And there's no option for taking that road through. Looks like it's owned by the HOA.
That's right, that's exactly right. I do appreciate that the applicants have aligned it, so it's possible. But I think, you know, I heavily doubt that this property owner would want to do so. And then there is a parcel right here that's owned by the HOA, as well as this property back here is owned by the HOA.
Chair Lewis, I have a question.
Yeah?
So there too, with that Hammerhead, that would have to remain open for fire trucks to turn around too.
That's right.
And then my question, do you know what the state guidelines are on fences that about highway properties?
I don't, I couldn't mention right offhand. I know when it comes to limited access highways, the UDOT would like to see the backs of properties up against those highways, not the fronts, just because they don't want to see driveways. Where there are going to be driveways along there, they want to see a limited access road that runs parallel to the highway.
Right.
But I'm not sure when that comes to?
I just didn't know if they would allow full height fences close to the highway.
We might not. So we would for a good portion of it, but right there at that intersection, there will need to be clear view triangle. So as you're looking to the left here at the stop sign, you should be able to see all the way down the road to uncoming traffic and not be blocked by a fence. The way this is all configured here, I think it's probably okay, just given the road is so far that way and there's quite a bit of space in this right away. But it would certainly be something we would want to look at at some.
Just for instance, in Ogden Canyon, 39 with the one fence, they had to bring that level down. So I didn't know if there was a distance requirements or if they were even allowed to have a full height, which could be an issue there again, where it's a backyard and close to highways. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners before I open it up to the public?
Mr. Chairman, Todd would like to add another comment.
Sure.
Just a little follow-up to the two comments that were made. First of all, on the clear sight triangle. Obviously, we'll have to comply with the county's requirements on those. But because it is a state highway, we'll have to also comply with their requirements for clear sight triangle. Typically, they go off of the ash tow requirements, which is more of an engineering requirement in this typically significant a larger triangle than what counties and cities typically have. And so that'll definitely be addressed during that review. As far as the Hammerhead, you are correct. The Hammerhead is laid out in the fire code, and it restricts you from parking within it. I did notice this a couple of weeks ago, the same thing that you had pointed out. And so we will alter that so that the driveway and the Hammerhead are not overlapping. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thanks commissioners, and thank you. So we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Why don't we go ahead and give everybody two minutes? State your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to two minutes and try not to repeat. And we'll take all your questions, and then we'll answer them all at the same time. Okay, please go ahead and raise an emoji, I guess, if you'd like to say something.
Chair for the record, will you indicate that it's a public hearing?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public meeting.
Hey, John. This is Alan Hauser. I live at 6162 East Quail Lane. I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand up as an emoji. I'm just not that familiar with. So I guess two questions that I have. One relates to what was just discussed about a triangle. And I'm assuming that has to do something with a view or safety corridor, making sure that one can see the highway. So that's a question, I guess. And then the other is, if that's correct, does it have anything to do with the speed limits that are on 39 as a highway? So that, you know, that could even be slowed down or the triangle increased or, you know, I'm not an expert at all of this, so I'm just throwing this out here. And then the second question I have is related to the two properties that are in the Hammerhead as it relates to fire code. I'm not sure I understood what Todd was addressing when he said that he would ensure that the driveways are off of, I guess, the main road there. So, but those are just questions. I don't have any comments.
John?
Laura Elkin, can I jump in?
Yeah, hang on one second. Mr. Chairman, I think it'd probably be most prudent to try and get all the questions answered online. And then we'll move to the commission room. We've got a few questions in here.
Okay, and I apologize. My connection keeps freezing a little bit on me as I come and go. So let's go ahead and start with the Zoom.
What? Hello?
Mr. Bird, are you?
Yeah, I'm ready. My name's James Bird. I reside in the chalets in Huntsville. I have a number of items. Am I on or not?
You are.
Okay. Basically, it's to deny the rezoning to the FR3. The request to change the zoning is to build 13 homes that are about 4,000 square foot on a three-acre parcel, not a five-acre. The other two acres are just another person's property. And according to county zoning, the purpose of the zone is to provide for medium density. If you look at those houses compared to everything around it, that is high density, it's not medium density. I maintain these homes would not be medium density. As a comparison, if you look just on the map that's up here to the left, those are North Metal Arc Lane homes. There are seven in that area, which is, what do you say, two-thirds the size of the three acres there. Thus, the proposed zoning change would allow almost twice the density of the homes that are adjacent to it. It's also likely that the builder will or the homeowners will allow or ask for SGRs. Because of the size of the homes, eight bedrooms, they could easily accommodate the legal maximum of 10 people. In addition, because of Utah House Bill 82, these homes could add a long-term rental apartment that would increase the number of residents, which the county could not prevent. Parking for eight bedrooms, two cars or four cars is really going to make this a very dense area. Also, the density of these homes is, to me, antithesis of the Ogden Valley general plan. 13 homes on three acres with the possibility of multiple families. The homes don't keep the integrity of the mountain environment on Old Snow Basin Road. They're already mentioning that they're going to put up a fence of Trex. That is completely different than anything you'll see along that road or in that entire environment. With the possibility of multiple residents and short-term rentals, it's going to really drain on the lake water supplies and the sewer lagoons that, which a commercial building probably would not. It has a second drive state in the Union, and we're in a drought. Constantly adding more water usage by increasing density of the housing seems inappropriate when it requires a zoning change. Additionally, the sewer lagoons, which seemed, Todd didn't know where they're located. They're right along Old Snow Basin Road. They smell already. They're an eyesore. Adding more sewage by increasing the density of people, doesn't seem that it's going to reduce the problem. I've been told repeatedly that this could be a gas station. But I want to, if you look at Section 104-11-3 permitted uses as a commercial, it doesn't include a gas station, doesn't even include a hotel. Art galleries, banks, bookstores, that it might. The county would have far less impact on traffic noise, light, sewer, water, litter, and possibly crime than 13, 4,000 square foot homes packed in a three-acre parcel. Finally, the request for zoning change is being made by a developer that wants 13 homes in order to maximize profits. I agree with that. I can see, I can't blame them. However, it will likely block the view corridor for homes adjacent to it, increase the density at the expensive green space and water, and reduce the values of the current homes. To maximize the profits of one business at the expense of current property owners does not seem to be appropriate for the county, particularly when it requires a zoning change.
We need to put his name down, remember him.
Can we make sure everybody's mics are muted if you're not speaking? Are there any other comments from folks on the Zoom electronically?
I have one, two points. My name's Laura Elkin, and I live on 6171 Quail Lane. I bike down Old Snow Basin and out on 39 frequently. And coming back westbound to make the left-hand turn up, back up onto Old Snow Basin Road, you have obviously very fast-moving traffic. And several times, I've had cars trying to avoid a car making a left-hand turn by going all the way into the shoulder. And so the added volume of these houses is going to just increase that volume of traffic making that left-hand turn. So I think from a safety perspective, having a left-hand turn lane on 39 to make that left onto Old Snow Basin Road would greatly improve the safety of that area. And along the same lines, you know, I've heard the rumor for some time that the bike path is going to get extended from at least Old Snow Basin to Winners Grove. Right now, it ends up at the entrance into Huntsville Town itself. So if all of the people coming out of Legacy and this development and the chalets can get from Old Snow Basin Road onto a bike path off of 39, that would be, that would be very helpful. So that proposal is one point I'd like to put out there. And the only other issue I have is a question about what the height limitation is on these proposed new buildings. Looks like they're pretty big from the images that you just shared. And that's all I've got.
Could you state your name for the record again?
Alar Elkin, A-L-A-R. Last name Elkin, E-L-K-I-N. And I live in the chalets on Quail.
Thank you for that. Any other comments online?
Yes, hi, my name is Gwendolyn Smith, and I live at 926 South Metal Arc Lane there in the cul-de-sac that these are approaching. And I share a lot of the concerns. I do recognize that residential may be preferred over gas stations, yet the high-density nature of this proposal is not preferred over a small bookstore of something of that nature. If this were to be more a medium-density housing, I think you would find great support for it. It's the, it's simply the amount of people and the amount of homes in this very limited area. The idea of a fence also is just completely different from the entire look of the valley. So the, in addition, the area right around here, these homes are not zoned for short-term rentals. And if the intent is that they would be short-term rentals, that changes the zoning of the housing right there as well. So as someone who would be impacted with my property value with this going in, I definitely, with this proposal, would prefer to see this day as a commercial zone over this type of residential zoning.
Thank you for that. Anyone else online?
Yes, my name is Glade McCombs. I'm currently an owner of, in the Edgewater Chalets, 6169 East Comingbird Point. We're constructing a home in that area right now. I have concerns about the density of this project as well. There is, there is no property on this side of the highway near that area that is this high of a density. And the other, the biggest concern I have, and we haven't even addressed this, is if we rezone the adjoining parcel across Old Snow Basin Road, now you're talking, if they come in with a project of the same density down the road, now you're talking, you've increased the density immensely and the traffic counts as well. And we're opening the door for that to happen by rezoning this one. Also, the residences, the way that this protrudes between those two residences to the left of the map that's currently shown, I would hate to be one of those residents now staring at those, at those two buildings that are going to block their entire view. I just don't think this fits with the, you know, overall nature of that area right now. And especially doesn't fit the setting of where this is inserted into those houses. I think that good demarcation would be, you know, Highway 39 there. And there's already high density over in that area. I just think that this just does not fit the overall plan of the Ogden Valley, especially, you know, in light of all the high density that's already across the street from this.
Charlie, you there? You want to go to the commission?
Yeah, let's make sure there's nobody else online who wants to say something. Last call.
Hi, this is Mike Ettringer. I live at 938 Metal Arc Lane. My house is the one right there to the left in this drawing, or in this image here.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
Could you speak up just a little bit? I apologize. Can you restate your name?
It's Mike Ettringer, E-T-R-I-N-G-E-R.
Thanks.
I guess I'd just like to comment and say I support Jim Bird, Gwen, Glade. Many of the comments have been made already, so I don't want to repeat them. But one of the things across the street, as I, you know, see that every night and see the parking that comes and goes there, it gets pretty dense at times. And it also gets dense with campers and boats. And I can see when you pull into this section here, you have eight times 13 bedrooms. It just seems way overboard. And those cars and those, you know, boats are going to be parking on the street. They're going to be coming up Quail Lane, they're going to be coming up Metal Arc. So it's, it seemed overboard. I guess, you know, I'll just leave it at that comment.
Great, thank you. I believe we have some comments from the commission chambers.
My name is Roger Dutton. I live on the Old Snow Basin Road. I was about the third home built up there. And now we have 50 or more that are there. And if we count the subdivision that is right adjacent to where this property is, we've just continued to see a lot of development, and that's fine. The developer comes in here and has indicated that it could sure be a lot worse than what we're proposing. But I don't think that should be the standard. I think what we need to do is really look at anything that this planning commission approves should have taken as the primary consideration, the impact. approves should have taken as the primary consideration, the impact on the entire environment along Snow Basin Road and this large subdivision that is already there, a PRUD that so many here tonight have spoken on. I agree with nearly everything that they have raised as this being problematical in a rezone or even a development. And as the planning commission, people that come before you, I think, should have a plan that is totally compatible without having substantial negative impact on the entire area. Now, I've been asked to speak on behalf of many of the property owners along Snow Basin Road in opposition to this project going in. This is not part of a recreational area, though it could be stretched and argued that this is a part of the general recreation area that this beautiful valley is. Pineview Reservoir and Snow Basin and the other ski resorts and other developments that are here in the area. This is not actually, however, a part of those recreation areas. Certainly, they are adjacent to us and we all appreciate what we have here in the valley. But I think the primary concern should be the great diminution of values of these high-valued homes that are along Snow Basin Road and actually some of the more expensive homes that have been built are in the Chateau subdivision at Edgewater there, right adjacent and next door to this. What it's doing is not only creating a much higher density if this were allowed, but it's going to be recreational vacationer-type density in this purely residential area. Any commercial that goes in there would have to, I suggest, take into consideration the impact it will have on any other adjoining properties in that area. I think this would be a terrible thing to allow to go in because of the negative impact and the change, the total change of the environment that exists in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. And again, let's try to keep our comments to two minutes if possible. Thank you.
Any other comments in here? I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie, I want to ask you something.
Who's Mr. Dutton?
When they make the, if this goes through, will there be any dialogue at all that there can't be in the SDR in this area?
So if you're just looking at a rezone, that wouldn't be included. But if you're looking at trying to get a development agreement...
Quite large, you know, I mean like...
So if, if it just gets rezoned to FR3 without any further agreements with the applicant, then there wouldn't be any restriction. Whoever builds a home would be able to apply. Now, it would still require a conditional use permit. You guys have looked at a couple of SDRs recently, found that there wasn't enough space for parking. And so each one of those conditional use permits will have to be addressed on their own merits, given the, whatever on that site. So there's still another...
It's a residential area. They certainly want SDRs in that residential area.
Yeah, that's right. And that, that has been one of the primary concerns expressed to me over this project is the possibility of getting short-term rentals in there. But again, going through the conditional use permit process, there's a possibility.
Then, as far as part of the development agreement with the county?
It could be if they want to do a development agreement. Right now, there hasn't been a suggestion of, of creating a development agreement. But it could be if that's the only way to get the zone. So any condition of approval that the planning commission may want to see in relation to rezoning the property, the only way you can conditionally give a zone is by capturing it through a development agreement. And a development agreement, by the way, needs to be a mutually agreeable document. And so it's not requirements that the county is putting on, it's voluntary contributions that the developer will be willing to give in exchange for the zone change.
Well, the county commission's one makes the final decision.
That's right. So I want to make something clear, though. The CBR1 zone does allow about the same layout that they're proposing here, whether it be residential or commercial. In fact, the CBR1 zone would allow 13 recreational lodges to be placed on the property. Now, I say 13 because that's the amount of sewer connections. It'd really be up to the sewer entity to say whether or not they can handle the sewers from 13 recreational lodges. But I, I heard a lot from the, the public concerns over what could happen here in terms of the intensity of residential. The existing zone still allows for that level of intensity of residential uses, plus whatever commercial they can get with the existing sewer and water connections that they may be able to get. So I wanted to make sure there was no misunderstanding about that. Mr. Chairman, there were a couple of questions that came up in the public comment period. Would you mind if I address those?
That'd be great.
Okay, one of the specific questions, there were a few, few comments that I wasn't quite sure if they were comments or questions. And so I'll address the ones that, that were specific questions. Question about a bike, bike path along Highway 39 that is in the works. It's actually funded. The bike path as it is, as it stands right now, isn't only to the entrance of Huntsville. It actually runs through Huntsville on the surface streets until you get to, I forget what street that is, but there's actually a, a brand-new section of path that runs from the southern edge of Huntsville all the way down to Highway 39 at Winners Grove. And so the extension of the bike path will be from Winners Grove to this intersection. Like I said, funded for the most part to at least compacted road base. And then we've got some funding earmarked in, in future years to put some asphalt to get all the way out to this intersection, which I think is a wonderful community benefit and would definitely help not just this development, but everyone who's looking in that area. The height of buildings, the FR3 zone limits heights to, the, the height of buildings to 35 feet. The CBR1 zone does not limit the height of a building. It does say if it's going to be over 25 feet, they have to get a conditional use permit, but it does not give standards as to what standards or what conditions you can apply due to height. And so in my opinion, that was a relic of an old code that probably can't be applied when you, when they come to get a conditional use permit. Because we don't have anything in our conditional use chapter about heights of buildings.
But the code calls for it.
In the FR3 zone, it cannot be over 35 feet. In the CBR1 zone, it can be over 25 feet. So it specifically calls out 25.
Specifically 25.
Mm-hmm. But it can be over 25 feet with a conditional use permit. That's right. That's right. So i- in essence, if they came in with something taller, I think it'd be really hard for us to put together a, a well-rounded finding to deny something taller than that. It's actually something that I'll be bringing forward to you guys soon to try and address better. So it's not as vague as just saying conditional use permit, you can do what you want to do. Hopefully, I mean, you understand, this is kind of a, a relic of a bygone era where conditional useful permits were kind of used as more of a discretionary, at the planning commission's discretion, permit. But the courts have recently said that's not the case. If it's listed in the zone as being allowed, it's allowed by the right. And you have to be very specific about the conditions that you apply to it and they have to be specifically related to what's...
Maybe kind of a motion, we don't have convention then, do we? Because that's the way the code sets.
Yep, that's right. Okay, Charlie? And another question was, let's see, there's another question here. Oh, a question about a gas station in the CBR1 zone. The CBR1 zone allows for a service station and that is what our code would refer to as a gas station. There's potential for a gas station.
Charlie?
It's going to be a commercial area right down the street.
That's right. That's right.
Well, not the other side, because the county has that. Western section over there, commercial area.
That's right. And they've got, yeah, they've got a lot of concept layouts of how that could be laid out.
Charlie?
Mr. Chairman?
Is there a way that you could bring up Google Earth for that intersection? We're going to try your tech skills here.
We'll see. It didn't start out very well in the meeting. Let's see how they go now.
There you go.
Was that close enough?
A little closer.
Second star to the left. Little road trip. How close do you want to be?
A little bit more. Okay, right there is good.
Is that your car there?
Nope, too close.
Hang on, let's see if I can get back in a little bit. Pinched a zoom, right? Working on it. Does that work for you?
No, come on out more. Little bit more. Okay, so right there. Okay, I guess this is what's getting to me. I like the idea of going to an FR3 because I think residential is, this is more prone to residential and it's just going to be my opinion, okay? But the density is throwing me off. The nightly rentals, I don't think, work at all. But if you superimpose the current plat or the current site plan that we're looking at on that, then I'm curious from a planner's point of view, this seems like a good corridor that you've been working on. So you can see how far back Ski Lake is, you can see how far back the chalets are. You know, they're not, no one's worried about, you know, walking out your door, walking out the back door and being hit by a car. And you've got this project is, you know, because it's high-density, you're jamming everything into that corner. And it seems like it's, you know, and, and then you literally have the only project in the valley with a fence around it. And you jam it up against the asphalt. That just seems weird to me from a planner's point of view, that you're, you're taking away the whole view corridor mojo you've got going. Whereas if you took this down in density, I realize there's 13 connections, but if you can only kind of match up with what's around it and you do, you know, six things, A, I think you'll get more money for it, but B, I think it's more consistent with that whole corridor and then you don't have a fence because you're not on the asphalt. So I, I guess my position is, from a planning point of view, it doesn't look like it makes sense to me, but I do like the fact that it's residential. Just drawn wrong in my, in, in just my opinion. So I don't know if you have a...
I appreciate that.
...opinion about the corridor or not.
I think you were asking for an opinion, but I, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I'm curious...
Do you want me to weigh in on that?
Of, of, you're taking a corridor that looks like it's been drawn purposely and now all of a sudden you're jamming something into the corner with a fence. Does that seem weird to you?
It, it does actually. And when you lay it out that way, it, I mean, it's going to be obvious that it, it's quite a bit more dense right there in that pocket. When it came to my evaluation of this, I was looking at it as to what the highest and best use could be in the CBR1 zone, which is currently zoned, and then transitioning from there to the FR3 zone. And so just looking at the existing entitlements, the existing rights under the CBR1 zone, I don't think there's any limit on how close they could be to that corridor right here other than the setback requirements of that CBR1 zone.
It's not a requirement thing, but like if you drew a line from the chalets to the church, it would, it would be back just as much as those fourplexes across the street are. So even the density doesn't bother me as much as you've, you've just suddenly put something out in the middle of a line that just seems incongruent with our, with our general plan.
That's right. And, and Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, this area here has been approved as their commercial space. So this is their 10% commercial. There should be commercial flats.
Okay, so at some point, that's going to be crowded with stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. There's nothing between the chalets and the highway, though, right? Or the church or...
No, no, let me move over just a little so you can see. That's kind of the end right there until you get to kind of vacant property. And then move the other direction here. That building there is probably as close as you get.
Yeah, well, I didn't realize there was commercial right there. So that does change my opinion a little bit, but anyway, thanks.
No, thank you.
One question. Is there even any dialogue with you, Dot, about a left turn lane for westbound?
Not yet.
There has been?
Not yet. No, when, when this plat comes in...
There's been a lot of development up in there.
There sure has been. In fact, there, there have been a few people who have called me in doing this evaluation, looking to get some turn lanes out there on the highway, both calls and emails. That consideration is solely up to you, Dot.
And you have one going eastbound.
That's right. That's right. And oftentimes, the way you dot works is, once there's a demand for something, they react as opposed to putting something in in advance. It's not the greatest way, in my opinion, to plan things out. And so if we can plan things, that'd be great. The question is, is will the impact of this development, not, not in terms of what we feel a more dense development will do, but what will actually the traffic counts do? Will it merit a turn lane? Because if it will merit a turn lane, they're not going to get their approval until that turn lane is...
That would be just a question.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. Thank you. Sorry. Any other questions?
Charlie, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of follow-ups. So I, I just kind of want to step back and review for a second. So the current zoning for this was developed as part of the valley general plan. Is that where that zoning came from?
No, as far as I understand it, the current zoning came before the general plan, CBR1. When we were working on the general plan, I was hoping to persuade this area, persuade the public to not allow a commercial area over here just because of the residential nature. I'm second guessing that thought now, that I've heard a few people in the area say that they maybe like to see a little commercial instead of residential here on the corner.
But, but it wasn't changed, I guess, during the general plan. It was ratified, I guess, and kind of continued.
Correct. Now, today, there is a development agreement that is assigned to the property that essentially calls for a hotel. Now, with that in mind, that development agreement has expired. And so either the applicant will need to come and renegotiate the terms of that agreement with the commission, which won't involve the planning commission unless it's a completely change in use, or get a zone change.
Okay, but the density of the current configuration is, that it's proposed is consistent with the density as currently stands?
In the CBR1 zone.
In the CBR1 zone.
Yeah.
Without the rezone, they can essentially do the same thing, but it would add a commercial requirement of 10%.
Yeah, the layout of it might be different. I have to go through and look in fine tooth to see what could be done under the CBR1 zone. But yeah, the intensity in, in terms of residential dwellings could be. Some folks mentioned eight bedrooms seems a little extreme. Maybe if they were smaller condo flats, and we're talking about 13 condo flats, that'd be a little different. Oftentimes, when you're sizing a sewer system, you're looking at the... Um, oftentimes when you're sizing a sewer system, you're looking at the number of bedrooms. Um, I don't know what this particular sewer district decided to do in, in, in terms of equivalent residential units when they gave the 13 connections. I would hope that that is based on bedrooms, not based on just one house.
That was my next question. Do we have any purview on the number of bedrooms, uh, in a, in a, either the current zoning or in, um, the proposed zoning?
We, we don't have anything in the codes that would say that we could restrict that. That doesn't mean that this automatically qualifies for a rezon. And so if the concern is about putting larger residential buildings here instead, I mean, there's always conditions that could be run with an agreement if the applicant is willing to, to go along with it. To have different types of buildings that have less bedrooms.
And, and you're leading to my next question is, um, great job. My understanding is we cannot compel the applicant to accept an agreement. Um, it would be uh, in consideration, I suppose, of the prospect of a rezon.
That's right. Mutual gain, um, would need to be had. Uh, I think the court will probably tell us better that mutual consideration. That's my non logical.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sit down and let you guys deliberate.
Okay. Well, thank you, Charlie. Um, gives us lots to think about. I have a project up the street, uh, so I'm gonna abstain from the vote. But we have, uh, five other commissioners, I think, in attendance, so that shouldn't matter. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. I can't hear you, by the way, if you're trying to make a motion.
John Howell.
There you go. Can't hear you.
You now? I'll make the motion, John Howell. Okay. I move to recommend to the county commission for approval petition number CMA two zero two one zero one. Request to amend the Weaver County zone map to approximately rezone approximately five acres, uh, from CBR one zone and also CBR two zone to FR, FR three zone at, at the address of nine four seven East Highway thirty nine. CW Land Company Agent Todd Myers. Also in the request is, uh, in the building agreement, uh, that there could be no short-term rentals in this subdivision. The subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and to all state and county agencies requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Okay, John, I think you're fading in and out. You're probably looking at your paper and then looking at the mics. So be sure everyone's continuously looking into the mic or talking into the mic. Did everybody hear the motion? Can anybody from the audience put up an emoji if you heard the motion correctly?
Sir, I was unable to hear the full motion.
That's what I was worried about. Um, okay, can somebody restate the motion, uh, into the mic again, please? Charlie, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, we're not hearing the motion, uh, very, very well. I think he's moving his head. So can somebody into the mic, restate the motion?
Commissioner Howell, would you like to, uh, restate the motion directly into the microphone? Yes. Sorry, it was hard to pick up on the Zoom call.
I move to recommend to the county commission for approval petition number C, or ZMA two zero two one dash zero one. Request to amend the Weaver County zone map to rezone approximately five acres, CB, CBR one zone and CB two zone to FR three zone located at nine, at nine four seven East Highway thirty nine. The applicant is CW Land Company Agent Todd Myers. Uh, also in this request, that in the building agreement, there is, should, there cannot be any short-term rentals in this subdivision. This is, this petition is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and to all state and county agencies requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, John. We heard that clearly. Um, I'll go ahead and open up the, well, first of all, do I have a, do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second it, but I have some clarification that I think we need to insert in there, so.
Okay, so I have a second. Now I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Um, the first issue, I, I, I just want to make sure when we say, uh, in the motion, it talks about a building agreement. Um, I'm assuming that that meant a development agreement.
Development agreement.
Okay, so we probably need to clarify that in the motion with a friendly amendment. We do that now? Prior to discussion?
Yes, I would ask if that is acceptable.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner, would you accept a friendly amendment?
Yes, I do.
To change building agreement to development agreement?
Yes.
Can I make that, uh, proposed amendment? We need to vote on that now? Chair, do I keep going?
Uh, if, if council's okay with that, I'm okay with the amendment if we want to continue to discuss.
Yes, if everybody understands that that is a change to the motion that was originally made, then that would be what you're voting on.
I have a follow-up question with, with, uh, staff on this. Can we, in our recommendation, I guess, um, I guess we're, we're putting a condition on it that there is a development agreement requirement for this petition?
So I think you can as a condition because you're making a recommendation to the, um, government body. Um, whether or not the county commission entertains the idea will be totally up to their purview. And if the applicant isn't, um, willing to, um, entertain the idea, I mean, that'll be, that'll be between the applicant and the commissioner at that point. So just to, just to make it clear that if it doesn't get into a development agreement, I mean, you may want to phrase your motion around the idea that it might not get into a development. So my suggestion, I guess, would be that where the motion stands is probably good because you're telling the county commission how you want to see this executed. Right? Um, whether or not the applicant is, uh.
Well, the county commission makes the final decision.
Right, yeah. Whether or not the applicant is mutually agreeable, um, can be worked out.
Chair, would it be appropriate to ask the applicant to address that particular condition at this point? Just so we have all that information in front of us?
Yeah. Well, and did I hear that correctly? That the, the motion included no nightly rentals?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe the applicant would like to speak to those two points before we go forward?
That is something that we can discuss back at CW Land. My, my instructions are that we do want to allow the property owners to have the options to be able to make those applications in the future.
I have a question for staff. So I get it that there's 13 hookups for the sewer. But has anybody talked to the sewer company and do they understand that these are big houses with, you know, made to hold a lot of people?
I haven't had direct, uh, communication with the sewer company, uh, the sewer entity. Uh, when it comes to them offering a will serve letter for the subdivision, that'll be when they're given their formal commitments, unless they've already made commitments with the applicant, um, otherwise. And so, uh, it sounded like, uh, Todd mentioned that, um, there may already be an agreement that has been executed with the sewer company. And so that may be, uh, something that Todd has better information on. The, sorry.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
That's right. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we actually do have a will serve letter as part of the application. So the question of whether or not the sewer, um, authority, sorry, the question of whether or not the sewer authority knows how large these are, um, we can reach after them and just verify before, uh, final vote by the county commission that they know how big the houses are.
Thank you.
No problem.
That not be a condition of the building permit as well?
Yeah, uh, so that would be a requirement, yeah, to get, uh, full service. But if the company has already committed to serve and there's already contracts out there that we're not a party to, there's probably a lot more to that. So just verifying that they have all the information, I think, is a good idea.
Hey Charlie, um, ju- just so I'm clear on this, whether it's CBR one or it's FR three, they can basically have the same density. They don't have to do in FR three, they don't have to do the commercial component. And our motion has allowed that, but also asked them, A, not to do nightly rentals. And B, what was the other one?
Just verifying that the, there's adequate sewer.
Yeah, there was something else. Oh, a development agreement.
Oh, yeah. No nightly rentals as documented by a development.
So it's exactly the same density, no commercial. We're asking them to not do nightly. Uh, and we want a development agreement. And these are all just suggestions for the commissioners. That's where the, the motion stands now.
Yep. And that's my understanding of the full situation as well.
Right. Okay, any other comments?
I, I maybe, Chair, just before we take a vote, I, I would, um, just reiterate to the public, we've had a lot of comments of people who have concerns about the density here. And, and I think just to reiterate what you just said, Chair, that this is current density. Um, and in fact, uh, this proposal is, is the current density minus a commercial component. Um, so it's actually a little bit less dense than they're currently allowed to have, uh, under the current zoning. Um, and, uh, and, and we don't have any ability to say no to that. Um, that's outside of our purview, um, and, and outside of our scope. Do we have a comment from the brain trust?
Our legal department is asked if he could speak privately with Charlie and I before you actually take any action?
Sure.
Kind of odd?
It's my keyboard.
Gentlemen, your mics are on.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I think you should let the public know what is going on.
Uh, I appreciate your comments. Uh, at this point, we don't know. So as soon as the, uh, planning director and council come back, we'll be brought up to speed on what they're talking about, I'm sure. So hang in there.
Mr. Chairman, we're, uh, we're back and, uh, we're ready to continue the meeting. We just needed a point of clarification, but, uh, but we're, I think we're clarified on our side of things.
Okay, so you have no issues?
It, it just had to do with the dwelling units that are allowed in the CBR one zone. So just making sure we were clear on that.
Okay, um, so back to the commissioners, uh, any other comments on the motion as stated? Okay, uh, hearing none, I'll go ahead and, uh, take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Uh, can I do a roll call?
Just calling out.
Yeah, commit, just say your commissioner, your name and if you're a yea.
Commissioner Francis. I support the motion.
So yea for Francis, okay?
Commissioner Hoag, yea.
Commissioner Waldrop, yea.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Lackey, yea.
What was Howell?
Yea.
Yea. Okay. And Waldrop was a yea, and Lewis is abstained, so motion passes. All right, thank you, guys. Woo, let's hope the next one doesn't take as long, huh? Okay, next item, two point two. A public hearing and possible action on a county initiated proposal to amend various sections of the county's subdivision ordinance to ensure adequate culinary. And secondary water for each subdivision. Charlie, why don't you go ahead and present?
Hey, thank you. So this is a, a project that we've been working on for quite some time, years in the making. And planning commissioners, you'll, you might recall a couple of years back, this came to you as an applicant driven request from, it was actually coming from Hooper Irrigation Company. Hooper Irrigation Company is here, operates in Western Weaver County. But it did trigger a lot of discussions about how secondary works, what our current code says about secondary water. And how it, the existence or non-existence of it affects culinary uses. For certain culinary companies. So excuse me for just a second, let me see if I can get it open quickly. Just thinking about it, there we go. So first off, these next two items on the agenda, I just wanted to apologize in advance to the planning commission. They are text heavy when it comes to the ordinance proposal. And I think my brain just stopped functioning after trying to get all that evaluation done because I reread a couple of staff reports and. They're not my best work, so I apologize in advance. I was trying to get this out to you guys in a timely manner. So we discussed a lot about water. And we've had a lot of work sessions, both with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, Western Weaver Planning Commission, and, and with all the planning, both planning commissions and the county commission. To try and kind of wrap our head around this very complicated subject. But not only wrap our head around it, but determine where the county's role is in the subject. We had. Secondary water entity, Hooper Irrigation, who was asking the county to take a more prominent role in ensuring that secondary water functions a certain way. That request was very heavily supported by Taylor West Weaver Water, who does not have the capacity to. Provided second, provide for secondary uses of their culinary water. And so every single one of their will serve letters is on the condition that secondary water actually is, is existing on the property. And, and then they're not the only water company who, or sorry, water district, because they are a district. Who conditions their culinary, access to their culinary water on the existence of secondary. And the challenge comes in is what's the county's role? Now, these are historically municipal services. These are, these are the types of services that a city offers. We're in the unincorporated area, obviously, and, and figuring out how to appropriately govern. An ever increasing developing area. Without diving into the municipal services subject is incredibly challenging. The more and more the county provides in terms of municipal services, the more and more like a city, the county government is going to behave. And you can see a really good example of that in Salt Lake County. There are a lot of unincorporated islands in Salt Lake County, and the city has to juggle. A lot of different planning areas and planning commissions to a huge cost to the taxpayers. In, in trying to figure out how to deal with that, including several different districts that cross city boundaries into the unincorporated areas for water sewer, et cetera. Whereas Ogden City, for example, has their water, has their sewer, has their garbage pickup, has their parks, et cetera. So. Figuring out where the public is and where the planning commission is in terms of. How do we embrace this idea of municipal services without creating zero motivation for municipality to be created? Is one aspect of it, and the other aspect is figuring out with the county commission, how they feel about it. We have had some discussions with the county commission, you guys have been a part of some of them, most of them actually. And it, it seems pretty clear to me that, and I don't want to speak for the county commissioners, but it seems pretty clear to me that they're. Not really excited to be jumping into the municipal services. Policy, from a policy perspective. And so whatever we can do to encourage those types of entities to exist and function on their own. Or to consolidate into some kind of a governmental agency, like a, like a special taxing district or a special service district or whatever. In order to revenue funds and administer that way. For example, the. Parks would be a great example. Parks district. Maybe a, a water district or maybe sometime in the future. Another sewer district or expansion of the existing one. Might be appropriate, but that is for the function of creating a. Efficient and equitable access to municipal services. Creating essentially a governmental agency that kind of has the corner on the market, if you will, but can't actually make money. Providing for the health, safety and welfare, I can't think of anything that's more important that the government offers that, other than access to clean drinking water. Sufficient clean drinking water, so there is legitimate governmental interest in doing this. Currently, we have a lot of private water companies in the Ogden Valley. Something to the tune of eighty something. Companies or entities that serve multiple buildings or multiple dwelling units. Much less larger community companies, obviously, but. Quite a bit of stuff happening. We've talked a lot about the issues that have come up over in Snyderville Basin. When the state and Weaver Basin had to get involved and the county had to get involved and use, I think they used eminent domain to take over certain companies to actually consolidate all into one district. Because you had water lines running in the same trench from two different companies parallel to each other. You had developers reaching over the service area of one water entity going to the other one because the one water entity's connection fees were too expensive. And they wanted to go to the lower, lesser expensive connection fee. In the long run, the. The. Nature of the smaller scale, trying to find the most politically correct way to say this, the nature of the smaller scale. Service of individual package. Service providers. As opposed to a more community wide service provider led to the failure of a couple of those service providers in the Snyderville Basin. Which is what prompted those different entities to get involved and, and actually take them over and create a, a district. Our goal here with what you see proposed in front of you is to. Try and create a way that is private property friendly, private property rights friendly. Respectful of existing water entities, both districts and companies. But also create an avenue for consistency and installation of the hardware that's in the ground. Hopefully create motivation for consistency and administration of water services. And, and overall, as water services kind of fill in and, and their service areas kind of buffer each other. Hopefully provide. For the best and most efficient and equitable delivery of services in terms of water and secondary water. So that's the goal of this proposal. Now you guys have seen most of this, there are a couple of changes that I wanted to point out. When I say you've seen most of it, you've seen some version of it. The last version, I think you guys saw, it had culinary water and secondary water split apart and, and addressed differently in the code. As I was working on the subjects of both with different water entities, both secondary entities and culinary entities. Began realizing that by and large, the needs of both culinary entities and secondary entities are about the same. I found myself typing the same thing in different sections, so instead what I've done is I've consolidated both culinary and secondary into one thing. And then where we want to see culinary regulated differently than secondary, we just call it out in a paragraph. Or secondary regulate differently than culinary, we'll call it out in a, in a paragraph, okay? Let me start with the opening paragraph, because we've, we've rephrased it to make sure it's pretty clear what we're trying to do here. We're trying to create a default and then some options if that default is not available to a landowner. The default in that first paragraph is that. There, there have been no changes to this paragraph, these paragraphs, and you guys have already seen. Just to be very clear. We do have. A couple of new definitions. The term irrigation water means water usually delivered by a non-pressurized pipe or ditch system that is typically used for crop irrigation, but which may also be used for irrigation of other vegetation. Pretty generic. Secondary water is quite a bit the same, except that we use the term pressurized. So where we say in the, in the code that I'm going to show you that we require secondary water, we're talking about pressurized water. Now, people who currently have access to ditch systems and gravity fed systems. That's fine, there's going to be no intrusion on any of that. It's the new developers who come in, the new, the people who want to develop the property, you know, going into the future. Pressurized system. Whether they create a pond or a holding system, a tank or something that can collect irrigation water and then pressurize it. That's going to be kind of up to them, supposing that they're not already within the service area of an existing secondary water provider. So that. Is the. Meat and potatoes of what we're proposing right here, and it's the default, and I wish we could just write that paragraph and call it done, but. There are so many different scenarios to consider that.
Hey Charlie, there's some people in the waiting room, just, you know.
Hang on one second, I'll let him in.
On, online.
So the default position that this ordinance takes in that first paragraph. Is that, so just written right here, the standard method for accomplishing this, and the default requirement is for the applicant to connect to an existing public culinary water service provider system. And to connect to an existing secondary water provider system. That's the default requirement for connection to water, culinary and secondary. However, to the benefit of applicants in certain circumstances, connection to a water, a new water service provider system or a private well may be allowed. As an alternative, as described in this section, so. We go into a little bit more detail, we talk about. When you can kind of get out of the requirement to connect to pressurized. Well, culinary and then pressurized secondary water. This is a, this is different than what you guys saw in your last proposal. Last proposal was three hundred feet multiplied by the number of lots in development. We looked into the current sewer requirements that's adopted in our code, and our code doesn't say three hundred feet times the number of lots. Like I suspected it did. It just says any building within three hundred feet has to connect. And I think that's been assumed to mean any lot within three hundred feet has to connect. And so what this now says is any subdivision boundary within three hundred feet of an existing operating culinary or secondary water pressurized line. Has to connect if that company can serve and is willing to serve. This is completely negotiable, this isn't something that the county commission told us to put in there. We have talked about this with the county commissioners. They haven't said that they hate the idea of a certain amount of feet times the number of lots. But three hundred feet times the number of lots just turned into a little bit of a, of a cumbersome endeavor for some of the larger developments or larger developers. So open to suggestions on that. And if you make a motion and you're okay with it, leave it as it is, if not, you're okay with the rest of it, you can just make a motion to change that. I think we had some discussion, I think it was with this planning commission, where the option of maybe saying fifty feet per lot or seventy five feet per lot was a little bit more palatable, a little bit more affordable for a developer. And what that would do is that would certainly encourage each development to, to reach over to wherever those existing lines are. I'm working with a developer and, developer in Western Weaver right now on a cluster subdivision, and he's got. I think his closest secondary water service is ten thousand feet away. And he is looking at figuring out how he can create his own system.
Do they have a map showing the reaches of all these different water companies?
We actually have a provision in this proposal that says. We're only going to provide this service for the culinary and secondary water entities if they provide us with accurate maps. That's, that's right, about four million, plus, plus or minus one or two, yeah. Anyway, so when you're looking at ten thousand feet to get secondary water. Sometimes, a, a, at some point you get a tipping point where the motivation comes in just creating your own system. The hope would be that that requirement to connect isn't so far that the developer. Is automatically going to create their own system, and we'd like to encourage them to, to try and reach out and connect into those other entities. This hasn't changed, the, the policy of this hasn't changed, even though the text might have changed a little bit. If you're in an area that has multiple culinary systems that can provide, or multiple secondary systems that can provide. It's just going to be whichever one would make the most sense. So if you got two water companies kind of fighting with each other over picking up a subdivision. At that point, the county engineer would essentially be the arbitrator and, and say, this is the one that we're going to require them to go with because it leads to the best and most efficient delivery of services in the long run. So section B talks about the connection to a new, so just looking at the structure, let me back up just a little bit. We are in part one, water service provider connection, A is connection to an existing supply. B is connecting to a new water supply and delivery system, so this is essentially a new entity. And herein lies the. The meat and potatoes, I think, of, of this ordinance, with the exception of what we're also doing with private wells. So basically what these paragraphs, the one, two, three and, and beyond, what they do is they say. Developer, you can create a new water system, whether it be culinary or secondary water system, you got to create that system under the rules and requirements of the state. But that's okay, you can be a new service provider, you can be four million and one, the four million and first service provider in the Ogden Valley. If you do create your own system, whether it be governed by a new agency, a new entity that you set up, or just an HOA. It needs to. it needs to conform with the service provider's requirements of whatever service provider is in that area. So if your subdivision is within the service provider's expansion area, where they know they want to expand into your area, they just don't have the infrastructure there, they've adopted a map that said, "This is where we're going and your property is in it." If you're within that area, but you're not close enough to connect, whatever that connection distance is, you can create your own. But when you create your own, you've got to do it to that service provider standard. So your lines, your connections, your sources, all the above, need to be to the standards of whatever that service provider will require. Now, there's another section in here that says, "A service provider cannot require more than what is reasonable and proportionate for that development." So you wouldn't be able to go in and say, "You're going to need to create five new wells that, you know, give us this amount of water yield." If, you know, say it's a four or five lot subdivision, for an extreme example, you wouldn't be able to do that. But, you know, a good well that can serve four lots constructed with lines, pumps, or whatever it may need to be installed in that system, to the standards that the culinary entity that's inside, that has that expansion area, would otherwise build the system to if it was their own, is required. That culinary water provider has the option at that point, and the code requires that the developer first offer that system to the culinary water provider. So let's say it's Eden Water, and there's a developer, Eden Water has created a map that says, "We're going that way. We know, here's our boundaries of our expansion area. We don't want to go past that line." Any development that's located in there but not close enough to our lines to connect, they've got to build a system that when our line gets out there, we can connect to. And that's solely at the option of Eden Water at that point. If Eden Water says we don't care what they build it to, then they can build it to whatever minimum requirements the state would require them to build it to for culinary, or whatever minimum requirements they need to get secondary water delivered to the max. So first option goes to the culinary water provider that they're in the expansion area of. And then the second option would be if the culinary water provider says, "Now, we don't want to take it over, but we do want it built to this standard. It's got to be built to that standard." And then a new water entity would need to be created at that point. Now, I'm working with Weaver Basin Conservancy District. The term "water provider" apparently has nuances that I wasn't aware of. And so I'm going to be diving into state code to figure out the differences between community system, there's some terms in there that are a little bit different that we just don't want to make sure that we're consistent with. The term that we're trying to say, when we say "service provider," is whatever the entity that is that is providing you the water. The state code calls it the Culinary Water Authority, and that's the authority that is responsible for approving the source and delivery system of the water that's being delivered to these lots. Create a manner with sufficient rights and shares to enable easy and efficient future consolidation. Contract. This is a requirement, excuse me. This is a requirement of the new water entity. If a new water entity is created inside of an existing water entity's future expansion area, they've got a contract with that water entity that they're in the future expansion area to essentially document how, at what point in time, these systems will merge together. I think the most opportune would be once the water, the existing water entity gets out in proximity of where the new water company is, the existing water entity would then connect the two together, put in whatever pressure regulators they need because it's a little bit different there. And then maybe it's a homeowners association that's running that water company, they would then give up all their infrastructure and their rights to that other water company, and the two would merge together, giving the existing water company a new source and giving those owners less of a headache of having to provide, own and operate their own water system. Again, this is an attempt to provide a 50-year future where we don't have more than 80 water providers in the Ogden Valley, maybe even less than 80 in the Ogden Valley. So here's where "Service Provider Maps Required," Commissioner Howell. "An existing service provider intending to use this provision for future expansion shall submit documentation to the county showing its current operating area and adopted future expansion area in an accurate geographically referenced format." So the intention here is that that service provider, whether it be a board, or a district entity, or whoever makes the votes or makes the final decisions for that service provider, they will, by whatever formal bylaws they have, create an expansion area map and deliver that to the county. If we don't get one from a service provider, all of the foregoing requirements of building to that existing service provider standards isn't going to be applied to that subdivision. And again, a little clause about multiple local systems. If two water entities get in a fight over who gets to serve what, the county engineer gets to make the final decision at the time that the development is being proposed. Okay, private well connection. So if you are outside of the area where you have to mandatorily connect to an existing system, or the existing system won't serve you, and you don't create a new water service provider, then you can get access to culinary and secondary water by means of a private well. This isn't a one or the other. So if you have an existing secondary system in your area, but not an existing culinary system in your area, you can get access to culinary by means of your well, but you're required to work with that secondary system to connect if they are willing to serve and within proximity to you. That could get a little bit weird because, you know, you're automatically getting a certain amount of acre feet from Weaver Basin for your well, but you're not getting enough acre feet for three acres of irrigation. We know that one acre foot is the Weaver Basin standard contract for a residential lot, I should say, and that water's about 8,000 square feet of green area. So having access to a pressurized secondary water system would be, again, the default, the mandatory requirement if it's within that proximity, and the system owner can serve you. Okay, the next section, Part B, so that was all how you're going to get the water and what the organization of that's going to be. The next section is about required water quantity. Says that every developed lot shall be connected to a system that provides sufficient quantity flow, rights, shares, storage, if applicable, to accommodate all intended uses of the water. Okay, so if you're within that proximity of a culinary water entity, you have to connect, and you have to provide the county with verification from the culinary water entity that you can use that water for whatever the uses are that you're proposing. So if you're going to use that water for secondary services, we want to see that in some kind of affirmation letter from the Culinary and Water District saying that that's okay. And if the Culinary Water District doesn't write that down, then we're going to assume that you've got to have a different way of getting access to secondary water. Okay, "Sufficient secondary water shall be provided so that all areas of the lot that will be landscaped with living plant materials can be regularly watered. At a minimum, the annual duty for crop irrigation, this is as set by the Utah Division of Water Rights, is required for all areas of the lot that will contain non-drought tolerant vegetation." The question there is, how are we going to enforce? Well, hopefully, we have a solution for that to some degree, but at the end of the day, people who want to steal water are going to steal water, and we're just going to have to try and be leery and hope that neighbors who are concerned about water resources, let us know that the neighbors have put in way too much green space on their property against whatever covenants exist. To ensure that enough water exists, the the secondary water service provider, whether it be existing or a new one that the developer has set up, they're responsible for ensuring compliance with quantity. Unless, of course, the, and it's not written in here, but it's implied, of course, if the Culinary Water Authority says, "You've got to have a certain amount of water for secondary," at that point, if the secondary water entity that has been created by the developer isn't showing that they're providing enough to meet the culinary services requirements, then they're going to need to go find more. The Culinary Water Authority has the authority to not approve a subdivision plat. And so they could choose to withhold that approval. If there's not enough secondary water for them to feel comfortable. Ideally, the best way that a water entity would ensure that somebody is not using too much water is hit them at the meter and hit them in the pocketbook. So adopt rates that are high, I mean, not so high that you're violating state law, but high enough to hurt a user's pocketbook. Some users aren't going to care. I'm aware of at least one user in Pleasantview City who had an agreement that predated their water rate schedule, who isn't, basically isn't required to conform to what others conform to. He's got a ton of land and routinely pays a $5,000 water bill in the summertime. And he's fine with that, and it's not even his primary home. So we're going to have that happen, but hopefully that water, or hopefully that money is put to good use in terms of shoring up availability of quantity to compensate for that person's inability to care about spending money, I guess, that's the way to say that. When it comes to a private well, that's where things get a little bit sticky. We know that culinary sources, meters are required. There's talk about meters required for secondary sources. We don't have a lot of those out there. But in the case of a culinary well, what we're saying is that we are going to, as a default, as a baseline, assume that you will be irrigating, or excuse me, watering 60% of your property. Now, if you don't want to water 60% of your property, you can enter a deed covenant with the county that says, "I'm only going to plant 30% green vegetation. That's going to require that much water." In that case, record that with the lot, runs with the lot, and you've got a vegetation plan essentially that limits how much area you can water. So the covenant shall restrict the area of non-drought tolerant vegetation to the actual area allowed by the water allocation, water rights, or water shares, given the water duty for crop irrigation as prescribed by the Division of Water Rights. A note shall be placed on the final recorded plat that generally explains the landscaping and watering restrictions per lot and references the recorded covenant, or if applicable, covenants, and that the approved exchange permit from the Utah Division of Water Rights shall be submitted for each well and shall demonstrate the total acre foot approved for each well. So basically, we want to look at the exchange permit to verify that they are actually providing sufficient acre feet per year for the amount of area that is documented in their covenant that's recorded to the property. Now, you think about this, you think about a three-acre development in the three-acre zone, and you've got 10 or 20 of those lots, each of them capable of having their own well. The developer, not the future landowner, is going to have to prove that all of this has been accommodated. You'll see right down here in Capacity Assessment, "Prior to final plat approval," and I probably should put in there, "Private final plat approval by the Planning Commission," because there's two steps on final plat subdivision code. I'll insert that in before it gets to the county commission. So before it gets to you guys for final approval, they've got to provide a capacity assessment for both, whether you're in a culinary water service provider area, or you're using a well, or secondary water service. So what we'll look for before we send the project to you is a letter from the Culinary and Secondary Water Entity saying they've got capacity, given the plan that they have proposed. Again, there's nothing going to be in the ground at that point, it's just a plan, but they'll have capacity once, if they execute it the way that they say they're going to execute it, okay? So that is going to include, the final plat will have engineering drawings, or the need for engineering drawings for all of these lines, and be viewed by the Culinary and Secondary Water Entities for a statement that says that they will have capacity. And then for a well, sorry, so just the steps to get capacity assessment for culinary entity. They've got to be able to say the system is or will be at the time of subdivision improvements are complete, capable of serving the culinary and secondary water needs of each applicable subdivision lot. "Adequate culinary water flow and storage is available or will be available at the time subdivision improvements are complete for all intended and proposed uses of culinary water, including but not limited to applicable secondary water uses and fire suppression appurtenances." Probably shouldn't try and use words that I can't even pronounce. "That adequate secondary water flow and storage is available or will be available at the time subdivision improvements are complete for all intended or proposed uses of secondary water." And finally, "The specific details regarding the requirements or conditions for the water service of which the county should be aware during the approval or construction process." So what the county's doing in this whole thing is we're kind of sticking our nose in the middle of what culinary and secondary water entities are doing and saying, "You better do it right." So that's a challenge when you've got these otherwise autonomous entities who are trying to perform. Do you have a question?
In regards to fire hydrants in these subdivisions, is there, I can remember way back in my subdivision, they required so many fire hydrants to go in. They didn't require any water.
So there should be a requirement in the fire code that says that the fire, the fire hydrants should flow. Yeah, so this does say that fire flow is a requirement. So hopefully the fire chief is out there testing all of these as they're being installed. I mean, it does say that it's got to be, yeah, it doesn't go as specific as that because it's not about fire hydrants, it's about culinary and secondary. That's right. It's got to be all hooked up, and there's got to be enough capacity to serve those hydrants. Yes.
Charlie, yeah, I kind of feel a little bit like I'm getting weeds here a little bit, but I got to bring it out. You know, there's a fairly, I'm going to say, half the valley, I'm taking the upper valley, does not have a secondary system. There's irrigation ditches. And, you know, for example, my place, that's, I get my irrigation water through a ditch system. And then on my turn, I pump it to pressurize a sprinkler system in my yard. Now, I don't know, there's, I don't know what everybody else does, that's what I do. So is this, if I'm reading into this, see, in a large portion of Eden, there's not a secondary system. There's a ditch system. If I'm interpreting what this is saying, is any new development or new lot proposed within that ditch area is required to create a secondary system.
Right, a pressurized system.
And that would be like an autonomous, you know, a private, a separate entity unto himself, if it were me, for example.
If it's a one-lot subdivision, well, sorry.
But reliant upon Eden irrigation ditch system to serve the water that they're using.
Right.
So people would have shares, or at least shares of water in the ditches, but to create a secondary system, that's, so in other words, some people would have to put in ponds, and then a pump system to You can imagine what that will end up being is a lot bigger mess than it already is, in my opinion, is because people have their own little thing
Right.
that doesn't meet anybody's requirements except for his own.
Right.
And then if and when Eden irrigation were to do something to pressurize, if that were ever happened, then everybody has to start over again.
Yep.
So it sounds to me like we're kind of, hmm. So it sounds to me like we're kinda, hmm, kinda getting real close to a cliff of blowing something up.
Sure. So hopefully, hopefully this resolves the concern. If you're not within a service area of a secondary water system, a pressurized water system, you can either create your own, or you can use a well. And we don't say how deep the well needs to be. So let's say you get culinary water from Eden Water, but you don't have a secondary system that you can connect to. At that point, if I were in your shoes, I would probably connect to a well, shallow well if I could, and then pump from there, which this does provide for that. If you chose to create your own system, let's say you're a one lot subdivision, or you're creating one lot off of an existing lot. If you chose to create your own system and create a pond and suck out of the pond to pressurize your sprinklers, I don't think that that would be improper to do. But you're right, it poses a risk or a challenge to try and manage and ensure that it's actually built to a specific standard. If the culinary water entity in your area has, so that if Eden Water has conditioned your access to their water on you having enough secondary water, then Eden Water would have every interest in the world to ensure that you've got a system that meets their standards, or at least their expectations. And so if it's just kind of a duct taped together piping system that may or may not work sometimes, and I was your culinary water provider, I wouldn't sign your fucking plat. I would wait until you have a better system, at which point I would compel you to dig or drill a well and pump from there. Does that help?
Hmm, no.
Does it make it worse?
Yeah, well, I mean, if someone that has shares in the irrigation ditch, I'm sure that they're not gonna be interested in going out and buying something from Weaver Basin to then drill a well and create a whole new system when they have shares in a ditch. So I don't have an answer to this, but it's a problem.
Yeah, I agree. And that specific issue itself is, is hopefully what we can hopefully we can avoid occurring in the future with these changes. Now, if we need to make some modifications to make sure that the motivation is that there's sufficient motivation there to require a landowner who wants to put more development in the area to have a very reliable delivery system that works for the Culinary Water Agency. At that point, it's just putting those standards and stipulations in there saying that connection to a ditch company, maybe it works under certain circumstances, that's, you know, again, harder to regulate. Because ditch companies do what ditch companies do, and it shovels at the headgates at noon if anybody does it wrong, right? It's harder to get involved in the middle of that. And a little bit easier just to say, this is the expectation of. If you can think of, or planning commissioners, if any of you can think of a way to help resolve that, by all means, I'm happy to try.
May I ask another hypothetical?
Sure.
Similar. So let's just say they end up putting, piping the canal over Eden. And my poor kids wanna build a lot, and we have historic water rights that predate Weber Basin. But the, we're going to be within that 300 feet, then would they be forced to? And then I would have to my water.
No, not necessarily. So let's say you're within the 300 feet of an existing secondary system. You would be required to connect to that existing secondary system if they can serve you. If that existing secondary system requires shares or rights to be transferred to them, then that would be where you would be required to transfer. And that doesn't mean that you have to transfer the rights that you have. Unless there's some laws that I'm not aware of, just getting shares that can be transferred to them that isn't your water rights would still satisfy this part. But having that water right, that is an entitlement to an existing ditch company or whatever it may be. I mean, that's valuable stuff. And so I don't think we'd expect you to have to part with that, but you would need to part with something that could be then transferred over to that water company.
And that, and there again, on the hypothetical with the canal, that could be really expensive for people, therefore, do that then. And I could see that to be
Even spanning, spanning the canal or going under the canal?
Having to hook up to that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it very well could be expensive.
It's almost like they're forcing people to do if they have to. It's almost like things going on at the time. It's kinda scary to me.
I completely understand. Yeah, no, it's, there's not any nefarious intent. In fact, this is just something that I've cooked up in my office and based off of all the different discussions and comments and variables that I'm aware of. It's, but it is the same as if you were within the same distance of sewer. You could build your own septic system in the back. It may be cheaper, I mean, not anymore, but maybe at some point in time, it might have been cheaper to create a septic system and a drain filled in the back.
On purpose had to build 300 feet off the road so I could have, because I would have had to pump it uphill.
Right.
So I mean, I know.
So you've been in that situation?
I've been in that.
Yeah, yeah. So yes, something similar to that would be how this would work. And again, it's just for the future of yeah, accurate management of access to water. Knowing where the water is coming from and going to, how the sources are, or where the sources are, how much is coming out of those sources. I mean, all that's gonna be necessary if we're gonna accurately manage the water budget of the Ogden Valley water basin.
Charlie?
I'll have a better answer. Yes.
So how much of this is coming from West Weaver? Because there's, and by the way, I'm in support of the end goal, but there's a lot of, it seems to me, there's a lot of language in here that kind of doesn't affect the Ogden Valley. In fact, you brought up something interesting to me twice where you talked about competing water companies. Win the deal on a new development. And that just doesn't happen in Eden. You know, we, somebody comes to us and says, we want water, and our answer is, well, that's Wolf Creek Water and Sewer. And so one challenge with, I think, the model is, is in Eden, in a certain distance around our wells, if anybody tries to drill a well, we're gonna protest it. Say we from sitting in this chair, Eden Water is gonna protest it. In fact, Eden Water is protesting one now. And what we don't want to see is, we don't wanna see or have to pay for that fight every time somebody wants to, you know, drill a well. And then on a funny note, I think your request for good maps, be patient on that. Because the best map I've seen of the secondary service in Eden is in one single pickup truck, and it's been chewed on by a dog. And that's a true story.
Yeah, I know it's gonna be a challenge to especially get them from the secondary water entities. And that's okay. Because it speaks to the overarching question of what does the county wanna be when it grows up? Does it wanna be a municipality? Or what does the unincorporated area wanna be when it grows up? Does it wanna be a municipality, or does it wanna stay county? The less maps we have, the less enforcement of this the county would need to be involved in. And so that's a motivation for those water companies to create maps. So that this can be applied in those situations.
My last question is, is it realistic to take a different view of the two, the West Weaver and the Ogden Valley and solve those problems independently?
That's exactly what the Ogden Valley, or what the Western Weaver Planning Commission has asked for. But as I've dived into the issues on both sides, I don't see a lot of difference. And I'm not a water expert, so maybe I'm ignorant to the issues. But access to water is the same on both sides, or the need for access to water is the same on both sides. The competing interest on expansion of service areas, that has nothing to do with any of the water companies that I've seen out west, has everything to do with cities and their expansion areas. And we've got several different unincorporated islands and areas of Western Weaver County. It is Western Weaver, because that's where the cities are, that have tried to stake a claim in their annexation declaration on certain properties. Who gets to choose? And now the Lieutenant Governor's Office has so far kind of abstained and said, mayor's way to work it out. I just wanted to make sure when it come to hopscotching over the, what's it called, the Snyderville Basin issue of disorganization of systems because people could hopscotch over different entities, I wanted to make sure we head that off before it becomes a problem, if it does. It did over there, it don't, maybe everybody would place an ice cream here in our sandbox.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But there are a lot of things that have been spurred on by Western Weaver that are in here. Most of them have to do with access to a secondary water entity. And how well that secondary water entity performs. That issue has not come up, at least not as robustly as it has out in Western Weaver. I only think it hasn't come up as robustly in Ogden Valley, because Western Weaver, we're dealing with 200 lot subdivisions. We're not dealing with that in the Ogden Valley, at least not right now. And the ones who do have 200 lot subdivisions are within a water service provider area. And has a better means of providing for those services. Readdressing Commissioner Hoag's concern about, you know, maybe it's a one or two lot subdivision and the expectation of creating a water entity to provide for the secondary water services on that property. I would hope and I would think that the challenges of creating a water entity under state code would probably be a little cost prohibitive there. Maybe even regulatorily prohibitive, prohibitive, which would then hopefully encourage or stimulate access, either finding another system to connect to, or access to a well which has a meter on it and is a little bit easier to govern.
I mean, it sounds like the culinary provider would have to be the they're gonna have to approve secondary source? Am I understanding that correctly?
Only if the culinary provider is conditioning their service on an adequate secondary source. So basically, the county, in this proposal, the county is essentially saying, we'll be your wingman to the culinary providers. And we'll help you go to bat against these developers who are creating really terrible secondary water systems. And we'll create ordinances and do development reviews and infrastructure reviews that support whatever the best outcome will be for the culinary service providers, storage, capacity, source, whatever it may be. So if Eden, if Eden Water says, yeah, we're comfortable if that developer connects to our system, but we're not gonna allow them to use any of our water for outside uses, we would look to Eden Water to verify that their secondary source functions and is workable, but we'll also be there to check on that. We're just not in the water business. Our engineers aren't in the water business. So when we're out there looking at things, we don't know all the O and M that Eden Water would have. And so it's better for Eden Water to do the final approval. And then a little bit later on, when we get to the county actually taking final acceptance of all the improvements, at that point, we'll be looking for a letter from Eden Water saying our services were conditioned on adequate secondary access and flow and all that, and they've proven that they've got that. And so we'll just look for their signature. But we'll also have looked in the trenches and verified that the system, the system is up and functional. So a little bit of watching each other's back, kind of thing. If they don't condition their service on access to secondary water, then they're not responsible for anything secondary oriented. Hopefully, they understand that it's a very high likelihood people will be using their culinary water for watering, outdoor watering purposes, if there's not a better secondary system in the area. We've got water companies that are okay with that, okay with allowing people to use outside. And we didn't wanna get in the way of stopping that. Any other questions to this point?
Just one comment. The judgment of whether or not a secondary system is adequate. There's gonna be some folks up there who say, look, my pond gets filled up in the spring and I'm good to go. And then, you know, we've got other operators up there who are delivering pressurized secondary water. And, and I don't, this is just me personally, I don't know that, I don't, I wanna be the guy making that call.
Does, I've been trying to avoid the question, but maybe it's better to ask it. Does Eden Water condition its access to culinary water on the developer having access to secondary water?
Not today, but
At some point in time, maybe?
Actually, that's not true. We do. But typically, or historically, I should say, where we've been delivering water has been in an area where they already had secondary water.
So it hasn't been a problem?
It hasn't been a problem.
At some point in time, it may very well be a problem. The other thing that hopefully this does is encourage culinary water entities and secondary water entities to partner, maybe not partner in corporation or partner in business, but at least watch each other's back. That is an issue that we're seeing out west. Because we do have a culinary water service provider who has a service area that is far greater than the next best secondary system that's in the area. And actually, we have two districts out west that condition their access to their water on access to secondary. And we've got a developer out west who created a pond and put some pipes in the ground and said, all right, I got my secondary system. Didn't function. And the culinary water provider could see that there was no way that was gonna function. Now, I don't think that the culinary water provider has to go out and look at all the seals and check the the pump capacity and verify all that. I think the culinary water provider, at the end, when they're ready to sign off and everything, just need to say, turn it on, we wanna see, we wanna see that you're getting water coming out here. Hopefully, that is more protection for the culinary waters' storage ability than what would have otherwise occurred. And so we had a water entity out west that was pretty upset with the county that we gave a final approval and their secondary system was garbage. Now, we've been able to work with the developer, because the developer's looking for additional entitlements to fix the problem. And so they've done so. But that didn't make the water company any less leery that maybe the county doesn't know what it's doing when it comes to water. And I don't think that there's gonna be any qualms about me saying that, because we're not in the water business. So honestly, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the culinary water provider that is only in the culinary business is wholly dependent on a secondary system existing and functioning. And if I'm wholly dependent on anything, I wanna make sure that system is actually gonna work before I issue a will serve letter. Or at the very least, before I issue a final approval letter. I don't know. So just thinking about, thinking through what the responsibility is for each governing agency. A lot of these entities, like I said, have reached to the county and said, I thought you guys were checking on this. And our answer is, we do water. So I don't know how to fix that, other than just saying, culinary guys, we'll back you up. My suggestion would be to not issue a will serve letter on the condition that secondary exists. Maybe even make sure there's enough capacity in your own system to provide for secondary or not expand outside of where an existing secondary entity serves. I don't know, maybe that's a negative consequence. Maybe that'll stop or stunt a water company's desire to expand. Worth a thought. Okay, for private well capacity assessment. We're gonna require written verification from the Division of Water Rights that authorization to drill has been obtained. That by itself should, should be enough. But there have been some concerns that maybe things get through the Division of Water Rights or the state engineer. That isn't quite in mind. So we go on to say the following items. If secondary water is provided by contract with Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District is required, written verification from the district. written verification from the district that an adequate allocation of water has been secured for each proposed well, evidence that the annual cost for the district's allocation is or will be attached to the tax notice of each lot. And proof of adequate allocation of water shall be demonstrated for all intended uses of the well. Water, including but not limited to applicable secondary water uses and fire suppression appurtenances. What this is essentially saying is that we're going to try really hard, but we may not always catch it. We're going to try really hard to verify that if you're in a subdivision that is providing secondary water uses from your well or fire suppression appurtenances, like fire flow inside your house, sprinkler system, that you have actually secured enough water out of your well to, to provide for all of that. And that your well pump test can yield that amount of flow. If you can't, if it doesn't, you don't have enough water. And you've got to find another source. And if you can't find another source in a financially feasible way, it might be time to sit on the property for a little while and until a culinary water provider or secondary water provider reaches that area. It's kind of the question about substandard streets. And I think Western Weaver, you, you guys dealt with this a year and a half or so ago on substandard streets. Western Weaver said, Western Weaver Planning Commission told the county commission, no, we shouldn't allow any development at the end of substantial streets, period, the end. And when, when questioned about, well, what about the landowner's property rights at the end of the street? On whether or not they can develop, the answer is, well, they can develop when they have a street that complies to existing standard. They bought in the wrong location or they inherited land in the wrong location and then, as real estate agents would say, location, location, location. So not every piece of property has equitable access to, sorry, not every piece of property has equal access to all the services needed to, to, to develop. But in time, if we plan well enough, they will. Or won't if we don't like development, whichever way we choose. Okay. Okay. So water supply and delivery system improvements required. Okay. A lot of these we take for granted, I think. But we do have developers on occasion who really fight the idea that a main delivery line has to be extended through the subdivision and stub to the adjacent land. Even if there's nothing happened on the adjacent land yet, it's got a stub to it. Within a public street right away or a utility use. We want to ensure that there is equitable access once infrastructure does come to the area. The county engineer doesn't want to see infrastructure installed in the public streets. Now, out west, we've had water agents, water entities saying this, we can't tell you where we're going to locate it. It all depends on where the existing utilities are in that particular area. And most of the time, they want to see a water cap and a collar in the asphalt. So they know exactly where they're going or where their lines are and not digging through the weeds on their shoulder trying to figure things out. So I'm going to try and work with the county engineer to see if we could soften this a little bit. But it says, unless authorized by the county engineer, water system infrastructure shall be located outside of the asphalt area. Most of that request by the county engineer was as a result of poor secondary water systems being located in the asphalt and chopping things up inside these subdivisions. Okay, sufficient capacity to serve all of the uses. Improvements operational before permit. So water lines and fire hydrants shall be operational. There we go. I knew, I knew I had that somewhere. Shall be operational before building permits are issued for any structure. So I was a little surprised that the county commission was on board with this. I, I thought that they, you know, want to hold off just a little bit. But the county commissioners were actually asked for this to be in the code. It was something that we, that I volunteered in drafting. The goal is to make sure that that line can be connected to just as soon as somebody picks up the property and wants to build a house. So you've got fire flow and you've got adequate water to through the construction period as well. Okay, if you're going to create a new source, you've got to have the rights or shares delivered to the water entity and provide the service water, sorry, the, the service provider's delivery system in compliance with the provider's requirements and standards. Conflicting requirements. If anything in this code goes against some of the standards or procedures or whatever that a local water authority has adopted, county engineer can say, oh, okay, we won't require that because XYZ is what the culinary water authority requires instead. And then here we say prior to finals, the county's final acceptance will defer to the water authorities or the water entities to verify that their systems are installed correctly. Again, we are going to be looking in those trenches and all, but we're not in the water business. So you guys will know better, or the water companies will know better. That does actually beg a question. A little bit further down, we talk about bonding right now. And to my understanding, the county is bonding for all these improvements, including water. I don't know if we're bonding for secondary water. If not, probably should be if we're going to bond for these kinds of improvements. My recommendation to any water agent, water agency that's out there, water entity that's out there, is that they hold their own bonds. If they've got the administrative capability to do so, they get a bond from the developer and ask the county not to do it. That just puts them in control of what gets released and whether or not there's enough money in the bucket for things to be improved or completed if the developer fails to perform. Improvements required for private wealth. So final to, sorry, prior to final plat recording, each well shall be dug and pumped tested for a minimum of 48 hours. Copy of the pump test results shall be submitted to the county and the local health department. Pump test shall demonstrate that equal flow exists to certain intended uses of the well. An inadequate pump test shall result in the subdivision's approval being void. So this is just prior to final, but it's after, sorry, this is just prior to recording, but after final approval. So just to be clear, prior to final approval, the planning commission should be able to see and verify that, at least on paper, their systems work. They've got rights, shares, approvals, engineering drawings, whatever is needed to verify that their system is going to work. Prior to final plat recording, you got to drill that well. If you don't get enough water out of that well, plat doesn't get recorded and you've got to revise your subdivision boundaries or your, your lot boundaries to maybe swallow up a lot into another one that does help. No dry subdivisions are going to go out. This is really just a matter of consumer protection. Most people have no idea what it takes and they're relying on their contractor and whatnot. And they're paying full, full development costs of the real estate as if it's a developed lot. And under our current ordinance, we don't require any verification that there is a well on each lot. We do require verification that a well permit or an authorization to drill has been received within the subdivision. We don't require verification from each lot. We just don't want people to get in a situation where they buy and can't get water. It also allows us to verify how much is coming out and determine at that point whether or not they need to have a covenant running with the final plat at recording that says they can only water 25% of their ground because they don't have enough flow coming out of the, of the well at that point. Possibly, just as a scenario. And then I think the most important part when it comes to wells, whether it be a culinary well that goes deep or a secondary well that doesn't, a meter is required. Now, again, this, I think, is the mechanism to keep people from using water that they don't own or they haven't paid for. It hits them in the pocketbook. But historically, the challenge with metering both culinary and secondary water is who collects the data? State code says that everyone's supposed to deliver that data to them. It's required. Also, it's on your honor and voluntary, but required. It's hard for them to enforce. They just don't have the capability to ensure that every single well meter is getting, being read. What this would do is require or allow, not require, it would enable Weaver Basin Conservancy District to build a tower or a communication device, whatever it is, to communicate with each of these radio meters and have automated reporting go straight to them. And in discussions with Weaver Basin, what we had originally written in here was if it's Weaver Basin water, if it's an allocation from Weaver Basin, yeah, put a radio meter on there in accordance with Weaver Basin standards. Or if it's a water right or some other mechanism, I think, probably the only other way. It's got to be in compliance with whatever the state says it needs to be. Weaver Basin said, you know what, why don't we just make it a radio meter that we say it needs to be? And then we can collect all the data for everyone and help the state verify that people aren't going over to allocation, whether it be a right or an allocation from Weaver Basin. Very, sorry, verification of a secondary water service provider's capability to serve. So this whole section, section E is, is only applicable if the culinary water service provider has conditioned its service on adequate access to secondary. And basically, this, this was what Hooper Irrigation had asked that we put in the code. Again, that, that proposal had been, it was recommended for denial with both planning commissions because both planning commissions wanted more time to really dive in and really wrap our, our heads around how this is going to work. So I figured I'd throw it back in because that was what the original request was. They did have it written a little bit differently. It put a lot more of a burden on the county to make sure these secondary water systems stay functioning in time. And you, everybody can ask the county to do that, but it doesn't hurt the county governing agency if these water systems fail, but it hurts the culinary entity. So we'll try to do what we can to make sure that these systems function, but at the end of the day, full acceptance, I guess, of accountability would be on the culinary water provider that has conditioned its service. Incidentally, we've got a pretty big subdivision that's being discussed out west that they've got access to culinary, but trying to figure out secondary and the culinary water provider is holding them, they're keep, they're taking them tasks saying, show us how this is going to work. Culinary water provider wants them to hook up to a local secondary system. But they're willing to work with the developer on their own secondary system or maybe tying into a different secondary system in the area. But it's been actually really great to see that water provider say, we're not going to sign this, we're not going to say, yes, this is our water, you're not going to abuse our water. So you're going to comply with our requirements of getting access to our water.
Charlie, excuse me, has there been any, been any discussion over who's going to pay for? Is if, if, if you go to the letter of the law, you know, I've got to send a water operator out to somebody's house five miles down the road and bring me back a report and that's going to cost the water company money?
So that's been most of the concerns from the water agencies is they're just not equipped. It might not even be financial resources. Maybe it's just staffing resources to provide for that level of service. I would suggest we look to what a municipality does do and try and determine how and who and when they pay a developer or a landowner pays for that. My suggestion would be to make sure that every amount of your time is compensated by the developer. And in having some kind of an agreement with the developer when you give the will serve letter that they will provide for your time. And, and that's in part what we do. Now, there is state code that talks about what a water company can and can't charge for and what their limits are, what their upper limits are on fees and impact fees and et cetera. And it's pretty similar to the code that limits the planning department's ability to charge fees for applications. Basically says we can't charge more than what it costs us to provide. But we can charge 100% of what it costs us to provide. So if somebody submits for subdivision review, we've got an adopted fee. Our adopted fee is based on our, our longstanding history of how much staffing time it takes to do a subdivision. And actually, we've, I think we took that number and divided it in half just to make sure we don't go over ever. And we, that's the fee we charge, which we don't charge a small amount of money. It's $945 as a baseline and then I think it's 200 or 300 per lot after that because that's how much it costs for the county to review. So I would, I would suggest the water company probably look at that kind of a fee structure to verify or to, to ensure that the cost for development is not being borne by all the other water users in terms of operations, expense for operations. Okay. So in here we get capability considerations. So if culinary water entity has conditioned its service on secondary, here are all the different capability considerations that the culinary water authority and/or the county engineer may use to say that that secondary source is actually functional. We go through source, storage, pumping, distribution, water rights or shares, and administration. So, and that kind of hits part of your question, Commissioner Lackey. Administration considerations may include ability to provide billing to users, enforcement of any watering restrictions, maintenance ability, continuously funding for emergency repairs, annual reporting, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, it's more related to the secondary entity, but if the culinary entity doesn't feel like the administration is going to be functional for that secondary entity, the culinary entity can say, no, it's not good enough. Now, I don't think the county needs to adopt this in county code. I think every water entity should adopt this as part of their bylaws. But in consideration of the requests from Hooper Irrigation and the desire to actually have decently planned infrastructure in the ground, it's, it's here and so far it's been pretty well supported and embraced by Western Weaver Planning Commission. It seems like the county commission hasn't had any opposition to it either. Exactions and denials of water service providers. So a water service provider is going to be held to the same rules.
Charlie? Charlie?
Yes?
Hey, would you mind if we took a five minute bathroom break?
How'd you know I needed it?
Okay, let's just take a quick break and we'll come back in five minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I probably should, probably should have said that's the end.
True.
We'll come back and spend five minutes on the.
You know, dig, dig a, oh, well, right next to the ditch? Yes. Is that right? No. Because it was making it there. That's, I don't think it's right.
there. That's, I don't think it's right. You don't came up. For the state water rights. Nobody can use water without a right. Can't just do it because it's on the ground. Because it's shallow, the twenty-five foot thing. There's, there's people who will argue till the dying day against anybody about it. I've talked to the state engineer about it multiple times. For me, that anybody that uses water has to have a water right. Yeah. Or you have a share in your division company or something like that. But, you know, licensed drill. No, get a drip back hole, dig it. So that's, I think where people get and there's been people that dig the hole and say, that's okay. I know, and there's, there's a lot of them. Yeah. And the creek, they put it, they put it in the river. That's right. Getting the, they put in the irrigation ditch. So it's all, it's all, so there will be people. Old me. I have. But
Hey Charlie, is everybody back? Charlie, are we good to go?
I'm here and it looks like it. We might've lost a few people in the audience though.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? I apologize.
Sorry, what was that, Mr. Chairman?
I apologize for interrupting you. So why don't you go ahead and proceed?
Okay, thank you. I probably should have told you that this is the last paragraph, but yes, no, it's okay. Let's polish this off. So exactions and denials, a, a water entity is going to be subject to all the same restrictions that the county is when it comes to exacting. An exaction is essentially when a water company requires certain things to be installed at no cost to the water company. Like an exaction from the county is going to be, you've got to build this road. In some, in, in a lot of cases, we could actually exact outside of the subdivision boundaries as long as we've got essential link between the impact and what the exaction is and that the exaction is roughly proportionate. So what that means is the water company is going to be essentially governed by the same rules. And if they aren't, if, or if they choose not to be governed by those rules, the county would rather they be sued than the county for denying a, a plat. So with that in mind, I mean, everyone's going to get sued probably, I'm sure. That's why we have courtment. But we just want to make it pretty clear in our code that water service provider, whether culinary or secondary, shall not use this section to require an unlawful exaction or an unlawful subdivision denial pursuant to state law. Kind of, kind of like saying, water companies, you're on notice, behave yourself sort of thing. And, and I don't mean that any water company would purposely do something wrong. Sometimes it's just a matter of knowledge. And then transfer of water rights or shares and penalties for removals. So whatever the water service provider, whether it be culinary or secondary, wants you to transfer to them, that's their prerogative to ask for that and require that as part of your commitment or their commitment to serve you. And if it doesn't go to a provider, then it's got to run with the lot. And you'll be penalized essentially is what this paragraph says. If you say you have a water right and you choose to sell it off of a lot. Basically, you're, I mean, that could potentially make the plat itself voidable. If it's just a single lot that's being affected by it, it, you know, it'll, it'll mean that every enforcement mechanism that the county has under the land use code can be used. Class C misdemeanor, liens being, or fees and fines and liens being assessed to the property until magically the water right or share or whatever it is shows back up. Okay, now. Questions, comments, more concerns, additional need for thought, reflection?
Hey Charlie, let me do this. I'll come back to the commissioners, but let me go ahead and open it for public comment.
Thank you.
Very patient. I'll take everybody on the internet first and the commission chambers second, if that's okay?
Mr. Chairman, you're opening it for a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Is there anybody on the internet zoom who would like to speak to this? Please state your name and address and let's keep it to two minutes. Whoever's moderating can go ahead and pick who's talking first.
Uh, Mr. Joyce would like to speak first, it looks like.
Uh, thanks Charlie and thanks commissioners for your attended attention in this, in this late evening. Just a couple of comments of things that I've heard. First, I think that we've failed to address in these, the case that wells will be drilled as a culinary source and/or a secondary source. In a lot of cases, Weaver Basin Water Conservatory, when they, you know, write these exchange contracts to people from out of the, out of the reservoir, they, they are not going to identify themselves as a culinary provider, a culinary authority or any other. And there's a major part of this code in which the secondary systems, the quality of the secondary systems is determinant, the plat's approval is determinant on a culinary provider. And in those cases, on those lots, there is no culinary provider. So the county is going to have to, I think, step up in this case and either make the health department a culinary provider or some other mechanism to actually get approval and requirements for secondary systems as applied. I wanted to comment quickly. One of the other commissioners talked about irrigation ditches. I completely a hundred percent agree with the comments, except the outcome, I would, I would defer. The, the case in which you build, a developer comes and builds a development on top of land that was historically irrigated out of a ditch, you're going to want to continue irrigating that land with that water out of the ditch for no other reason than, you know, maybe it was historically replenishing aquifer and aquifer's health. And besides, we would rather use that ditch water than pull it out of a, out of a well. The code is, is written, doesn't clearly identify if the, if the, to me anyway, if the developer has access to the ditch water, to irrigation water, whether or not they're required to provide it to the subdivision one. And if, if the ditch co-op or whatever it is, or, you know, water authority or provider is willing and able. And then second off, I think the outcome that you want is exactly what was described earlier. That wasn't the outcome, which is what you would expect is, is that the code would enforce the developer to put pressurize access to create a secondary water system to that ditch water. So for example, where I live in my neighborhood, I'm, I'm about 2,000 feet away from the ditch water that was provided as part of the contract to my home. And, and a whole development was left with shares of a water company in which they can't access the water. The developer left the subdivision basically with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill to put in a pressurized irrigation system. So I think the code should address that condition and should enforce that if secondary water is provided as irrigation water, that there is a secondary system that is required to be installed by the developer. And then two, that it is stubbed to each of the lots. And in that case, obviously it would have to be delivered to the HOA or some other entity to take over ownership and operation of it. But that is the outcome that I think that we'd be searching for in these. I think if you, if you look at the, the meaning of these land use codes, water is, it's an understatement to say it's complicated. Charlie started his comments with that it's complicated. And, and I want to again appreciate all of Charlie's efforts and his willingness to take comment from, from people like me in the valleys. He's been working through this and commissioners time to, to consider it. But if you, if you think about the general plan, we're, we're here to ensure that we, that this valley survives the growth that it's going to receive and that we, we keep it environmentally safe and we, and we do the right things when we come to production. And, and although I think we've made huge amounts of progress in this code versus the current land use code, I still think there's a lot of opportunity here to ensure that developers are providing culinary and secondary water when they are, when they are building within a range of a culinary and secondary provider that doesn't, doesn't get caught up in the current wording of this. I think the commissioners should take a serious look at all of the kind of corner case use cases where there isn't those providers and/or there isn't, there isn't language here in which enforces the developers to actually provide stubs of culinary and secondary when, very specifically when culinary is provided by wealth. So just a couple of comments on what I heard and appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Whoever's next, please try to keep it to two minutes. Go ahead. Thank you.
I think that means that I'm up. This is Miranda Menzies, three eight oh seven North Elk Ridge Trail. I'd like to, like Paul, thank Charlie for his efforts. This has been a really magnum opus getting through all this. It is complicated and that's why you've got a code here that looks complicated. And while I have the greatest respect for Paul's comments here, I felt reading through it that it held, it, it certainly went a long way towards requiring what he, Paul requested, which was that be clear that culinary and secondary water would be provided to each lot that is, does have a, a recorded plat. So I support what Charlie has done here. I do think that the 300 foot distance should in fact be somewhat diff, larger, possibly 500 or 750 feet. Because if there is an existing provider who is willing to serve, I think that that would be a better outcome. One of the changes that I've also asked Charlie to consider is in considering both water quality and water quantity in the pump test. Right now, it just says, talks about quantity. And if in fact the quality of the water is inadequate for culinary use, I think it would be better to have wording in there that specifically calls that out. It would simply be a question of adding analytical results or water quality analysis to that requirement for the private well. Water, culinary water providers already have everything coming out of the wazoo from the state. So I'd suggest we go ahead with something very like what we've got here, maybe with a few tweaks and see what, how this goes. Because I don't think we're going to look, be able to cover every eventuality. It is just too complicated a subject to get everything right perfectly the first time. But I think this code goes a very long way. So those are my thoughts and I thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thanks, Miranda. Okay, anybody else?
Thank this gentleman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, nobody else online, but we do have someone in the audience.
Good evening. My name's Dan Maybe. I'm at seventeen fifteen Canyon Circle Farmington, Utah. I appreciate the service you're all doing. Probably way past supper time. I don't know if you guys are going to get any tonight, but I understand they've still got more, more to go. I just had a couple of concerns as a potential developer of a small development in the Eden area. As I look at this water code and, and obviously it's the county's prerogative to establish their parameters for development, but talks in section one oh six four dash two dot one A about it being a requirement that all developments have secondary water systems. Further goes into B two of that same section, requiring that there's sufficient amounts that cover all the lot size in that development. And then C, it talks about the capacity assessment to do that. So a little bit similar. So this particular property that I'm looking at is, is an RB three or FB three, three acre minimum lots. There's no water on the property now. I've not been able to find secondary water for the property. I had line on trying to get some purchase, but it's just not. We have culinary water available, but no secondary water. There's no water service provider in the area or close to us. And so effectively that would preclude us from being able to do any development on this if we had to have secondary water for all the lots for the full size. And of course, all water is owned by the state of Utah. Uh, there's a lot of entities, as Charlie's mentioned up there, so a lot of connectivity and understand the necessity of being able to coordinate that type of thing. But on some properties that are natural forest properties that aren't irrigated, that don't necessarily have any irrigation water assigned to them and there's no water able to be purchased for them, that creates another challenge to be considered. And so if you're not in the water business, this is going to get you in the water business. And it gets to be really complex and complicated. So in our particular situation, if I were able to buy and I did have a line on some of seventy-five hundred dollars per share, it would add a half million dollars to the cost of development to try to get secondary water to these lots that have been dry all along, forested and dry. And that would just make it prohibitive to develop that particular area in the way that the ordinance looks at it being done. So the ability for people to even get water is a big challenge if this enforce, if this requires that enforcement. So just something for your consideration. Thank you very much.
All right, my computer just clicked off for a second. Sounds like we're back. I apologize. My, my computer just froze. So are you done with the comment?
Yes.
Okay, again, I apologize. Okay, anybody else have a comment? Okay, hearing done, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, back to the commissioners. Commissioners, are there any other additional comments? I think what Charlie's done here is, is admirable and a ton of work. And I think like Miranda says, it's probably a good push forward and not that it can't be tweaked later, but I, I commend him on his work. Any other further comments?
I, I do have a question about, you know, we've seen some petitions for development on top of Monte Cristo and some other areas. And so I'd like maybe some comments on that.
Sorry, can you specify one more time?
There it can, to, to his comments. Such as petitions for development on top of Monte Cristo or some of these out in the mountainous areas and what's, you know, how does this relate to that?
Actually, I think that's a really good observation. If it wasn't eight thirty, it'd probably be easier to address the issue because I think we probably have addressed it somewhere in here. Hang on one second. Let's see what we can do. Okay, so we say either A, you have to connect to an existing, no existing would be there, right? Or B, you either need to have a well or A, create a service provider. And so in that particular case, if you're out in the, in the woods and you're getting your culinary service from an existing culinary service provider and that culinary service provider is not conditioning its service on secondary, access to secondary water. Just walking through the logic of it. I, I think this gentleman's right. I, I don't think we've got a scenario written in here that would address that. And, and I do think certainly what we have written under the well requirement. Let's see. Let's see. So secondary water by private well, we say the default expectation is that 60% of the lot will be covered, but that can be reduced if a covenant runs with the land and all these things happen. I think we can write into this section. And maybe it's the wrong place to put it because this is specifically addressing a well and there wouldn't be a well in those cases. Let me think through it just a little bit. I think we, it's certainly something worth considering. Yeah, keep it natural. Yeah, absolutely. Well, and, and if, if they are, yeah, taking water all the way up to wherever they are on the mountainside. I mean, it's because they're taking down the natural vegetation, vegetation and putting grass in, right? I mean, that's probably not the most ideal term, situation. So maybe we, maybe we address this issue on a, on a topography level or like above a certain elevation. You know, things can be a little different. I don't know. Let me put a little more thought into that.
Charlie, I just, I, I'm still struggling with how the, the Eden irrigation versus Eden Water Works is going to work things out. I mean, it's going to take some, I think my understanding historically has been Eden Water Works may, maybe they check with the irrigation company to verify if there are shares on the property and then the book is closed. You're good, you're not. And at least I think, I don't, I'm honestly not positive. That's what I've always assumed. And in a, but that, that could be one share, that could be 20 shares on various sizes of property. And then when we start to get into a secondary system pressurized versus flood irrigation, there's, there's a whole range of options that, that might be utilized in that regard. And I'm not sure. I mean, you've done a great job and honestly, I understand this, this version much better than I, the last version.
Good.
But.
One step in the right direction.
But I, yeah, I think we're making good progress, but I'm, I'm just not, I'm not, I don't think we've cracked that can open yet.
No, I understand. And if we need to get something in here that enables flood irrigated properties to continue that way, I, I obviously this wouldn't apply to anything outside of a subdivision. But if you've got lots that are 20 acres apiece inside of a subdivision, you have flood irrigation, if it's been historically flood irrigated, probably. Also, people who have rights who aren't using them because now they're using a well, that's not a good situation to put somebody in because there's forfeiture laws. So yeah, I could see some potential need. Challenge I think we can have in wrapping our head around that is finding a way to enable it without creating a way for developers to first, or circumvent the requirement. And I am all ears. If you guys have ideas at this time of night.
Another comment. To address Miranda's suggestion on the quality, I think that is an important element also. If they come with the water that they can arrive, that they can negotiate with the water company, that the quality of it would be detrimental to the company, you know, if it's not a good.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see something like that written in too, for sure.
Yeah, and to to Miranda's credit, I did have a previous version that did talk about quality. She's right, it doesn't.
Hey Charlie. My computer just keeps freezing on me. I apologize. But how do you feel about the idea of tabling this and massaging it a little bit more and coming back with a few more tweaks?
I think it's a wonderful idea and I'll make sure that word quality is, is in there again. Said yes, that's a good idea and he will add the quality portion of the conversation. No, he's, he cut out. And so he's on speakerphone over here.
Shayna, close the meeting because my computer's just not working. All right. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
This is killing me. Okay.
No, we, we can hear you. John, we can hear you now.
Okay, so real quickly, great work, Charlie. My suggestions.
You're, you're gone now. Hold on, John, just speak, speak through my phone. Everybody can hear you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Charlie, great work, but man, tough night. Okay, I think it's probably prudent at this point to call the meeting. Thank you all for your work. And Charlie, I apologize, we didn't get to your last item.
That's perfectly fine. We'll address it later.
Yeah, okay. Any, any additional public comment that are, for items not on the agenda?
One note, Commissioner, or Chair Lewis, if we were to open this last item and did a quick overview, then we could possibly table it so we didn't have to renotice it for a public hearing. But if you don't feel like you can even do that, I understand. It's very late.
How quick can you do it for us before we table it, if we need to?
Well, don't ask Charlie that because he goes on and on.
Can you do it in five minutes?
Yes, Charlie.
I was halfway out the door.
Charlie could do it in five minutes legally. If you just open the item, introduce it, open it up for a public hearing. You wouldn't even have to give an overview. You could just introduce it, open it up for a public hearing, close the public hearing. You've satisfied that legal requirement of holding a public hearing on the item because it has been properly noticed. And then you could have a motion to table it and have a, a public meeting, which is simpler notice. It doesn't have to go through all the notice requirements for a public hearing. And then you could actually address it at a public meeting later and that way you're complying with all the legal requirements.
Yeah. Okay, let's do this. So Charlie, why don't you go ahead and introduce the topic? And then let's immediately open to the public and see if anyone is here to speak to it.
Okay, perfect. I'll, I'll give you the nuts and bolts of it. The actual language is a little more complicated because there's some technical aspects of it. But this proposal would allow private streets in subdivisions. It would also allow what we're now terming shared private lanes within subdivisions. But the condition of allowing that, because right now our code doesn't allow private streets or lanes. The condition in allowing that would be that an easement along those streets or lanes are dedicated to the county in whatever width the right of way standard would be if it was a public street. And that easement can just be held by the county for potential public future road purposes if there's any need to make a connection in the future. So then it goes over some standards and requirements for what a private lane should be built to. Private streets should be built to public standards, but you put a gate on it. And a private lane can be built to smaller standards, 20 feet wide, on 24 foot right of way. But really what we're trying to do is we're trying to preserve the opportunity 50 years from now when it's probably not going to be zoned AV3 because we all had babies and our babies had grandchildren, more babies, to actually get public road connectivity in the area. But in the meantime, have these roads be private, let the landowners maintain them, keep that liability off of the county, out of the county coffers until such time that it's needed to be public. Any questions? Somebody time that? My record.
Okay, well done. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the meeting to the public. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak to this topic?
We've got one comment from the audience says, good idea.
Was that the comment?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, sweet. Okay, thank you for your comment. Thank you for your time. Or go ahead and close the public meeting. Back to the commissioners. At this point, do we have any questions on this particular topic or shall we table it?
Chair, I would move that we table for further discussion at later time.
Commissioner Lackey seconded that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. It's been tabled. Again, I'll go ahead and say, any public comments from the, from the public that are not on the agenda? Hearing done. Do I have any planning commissioners additional remarks? Snoring doesn't count. Anything from the planning director? Anything from legal counsel?
No.
Okay. Thank you all so much for such hard work. This is unbelievable for volunteers. Please all go home and have dinner. Have a great night.